I'd like to call to order the Bucksport Town Council meeting for Thursday, June 9, 2016. Road call, please, Kathy.
Joseph Yar.
Here.
Paul Raz.
Here.
David Key.
Here.
David Key.
Here.
Peter Stewart Abson, Paul Gobden, Abson and Robert Carmichael.
Here.
Okay, item three is presentation of any town council recognitions. We do have recognition today. Susan?
It's my pleasure this evening to present on behalf of the town council and myself, a life-saving award to firefighter, paramedic, John Gavalek, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium. I'll say nice things about you. The council and myself would like to take this opportunity to thank you, award you a life-saving award. On May 1st of 2016, John saved the life of an individual who had gone into the water off the town pier. He, firefighter, paramedic, Gavalek, entered the water himself, swam out to the individual, secured him, managed to get him back to shore, where he was then transported to the hospital, and in typical John fashion, John went back and finished his shift. And if you remember, but May 1st, it was cold, the water was cold, and it is clear that John's actions saved the life of this individual. He was nominated for this award by Sergeant David Winchester, and I want to thank Sergeant Winchester for making the nomination, but also tell him that the council and myself certainly concur with the fact that your actions saved the life of an individual, and we want you to say our thanks and a small token of our appreciation from a very grateful community for your service. And I want to take a couple more minutes, as I always do, to thank you not only for saving the life of the individual as you did, but for the level of excellence that you bring to your work on a daily basis, and we are grateful for that as well. The people of Bucksport are fortunate to have a dedicated, well-trained, caring group of people working for them in public safety. It is easy to forget just how above and beyond the norm these men and women go on a daily basis. For just a few other examples of recognitions recently, Chief Gauden and Officer Harland received a commendation for bravery from the Maine State Police this past week for their actions in regard to a tragic event that occurred on the waterfront here several years ago, and Chief Gaggen and three of his officers made a trip to Boston to see a young man from the community who had a serious operation who's been part of their department. These are the people that no one wants to have to call, who deal with issues and circumstances that no one wants to think about. But it is comforting to know that if you do need to call, you'll always get 150%, as exhibited by firefighter, paramedic, Gavalek. Thank you. On behalf of the Bucksport Town Council presents a life-saving award to firefighter, paramedic, John Gavalek for bravery and courage on May 1st, 2016, in saving a victim from drowning in the Penoxut River, presented this ninth day of June, 2016. Signed, David Key.
Thank you.
Thank you, and a small token of our appreciation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item four, consider minutes of previous meetings. I believe the town clerk has emailed all the council members minutes for March 17th, the 24th, April 7th, and April 14th. I'd like to give the council an opportunity to look over those minutes, and we'll approve the minutes at the next full council meeting. Is that acceptable to everybody?
Yes, please.
All right, fine. Okay, item five, receive and review correspondence and documents. First one being Down East Transportation Ridership, May 2016. You have anything on this, Susan?
This is the Ridership Report from the shuttle and the cab that you participate in funding here. This is just May's Ridership.
Everybody see that? Okay, item B is weekly construction summary. This is on the sewer treatment plant.
Yes, it is. This was work completed the week of May 23rd and the week of May 30th. We get a report every two weeks that outlines what they've been up through. And they're still on time and on budget, and we still have had no change orders that have increased the cost of the project.
Wonderful. Any questions from anybody on those two items? If not, we're going to go on to item six, public hearing. We're holding a public hearing to discuss the general fund budget, the sewer budget, the marina budget, and capital improvement budget. I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Are we going to have any presentation on this?
I'll have to say a few words about that.
Okay, yep.
The general fund budget, which is item A, is the only budget, the budget of the first three that affects the mill rate and taxation in the town of Bucksport. And as outlined here, the result of this budget would not only not be an increase in taxes, but would be a minimum decrease of 20 cents. And I say minimum because I don't have the final valuation numbers for the community and won't for another month or so, but it is clear that, including county school and the town, that the mill rate would drop at least 20 cents, which is not $5, but it's going in the right direction in terms of going down as opposed to having gone up in the past. The town's settled its valuation with the state as far as the mill goes. There's not going to be any further surprises in terms of up and down valuations. There was, however, a typo in the enterprise this week that said the school budget was $124 million, and it isn't. The school budget is 14.2, 14 million, 20,000, up 1.52% over last year's 13 million, 800,000, around $200,000 increase, but it's not 124 million. So, for the people who called today, it's not 124 million, it's 14, 200,000, 20,000 rather. So, the budget as presented keeps the manager as a part-time position. It doesn't replace the finance director. It makes accommodation for the retirement of our current public works director and discussion about the next iteration of what that role is going to be moving forward. It makes accommodation for insurance changes to personnel insurance by increasing deductibles and reducing premiums with an offset from the town that will allow employees to retain good insurance, but allow the town to pay less in premiums and therefore save money in that respect. This budget restores reserve funding. Last year's budget lowered that to 35,000. This budget, it offsets part of last year's loss and accommodates moving forward. The town historically had reserved to nearly $800,000 a year, and this budget has 460,000, but that is in essence two years of reserving because it replenishes what didn't happen last year so that when you need to buy or lease a major piece of equipment, that there is sufficient monies in reserve not to have to bump the mill rate to accommodate that. The proposed to lower it is done with the idea that it can stay down and not so that it can go down artificially in one year and then go back up in another year. That's not the premises that it's been built on. And while perhaps it's not as aggressive as some people have liked, it is a journey, not a cliff. And so, that's sort of where it is. The only other things I wanted to note, and I gave you a memo on it, is that when the council did this budget review for social service agencies, you didn't make recommendations at that time, and they were, most were the same ones you had funded on an annual basis, very consistent. There were some, however, that were much larger increases or entities that had not been funded in the past. Maine Family Planning, Amay's Homeless Shelter, one at $4,080, one at $4,924, were not past recipients of funding of the town. Life Flights Increase request was $981. That's almost 400% more than you had done prior. Eastern Area Agency on Aging's Increase request was $500, 1,500 to 2,000. And the Healthy Communities Coalition went from 7,800 to 15,000. And the coalition is in director transition, shall we say, and they've had some funding challenges, I believe. I know that, it was brought to my attention after that meeting, that three years ago, the council approved a $25,000 appropriation for the coalition, but it was a one-time larger-than-normal appropriation. The ones on this list are all ones that either weren't there before or were larger than normal for the council to make some sort of a decision on how you, if you want to leave those all in the budget or if you want to make some adjustment to those items. We have to answer any questions that anyone has on this budget, what it does, what it doesn't do, and how sustainable it is.
So, the current budget with, as you referenced, includes the increase of 17,685?
Yes, it does. I only mention it because the agency funding, outside agency funding, there are many schools of thought on the town's role in providing agency funding, and I've been in communities where it's very contentious in terms of people consider them to be donations and that donations should be personal choices and not choices made by municipality with tax dollars. But without the 17,000, 685, you are already at more than $60,000 in all, and so, you're, it's a healthy donation percentage to outside agencies overall. As presented in this budget, it was, it went from 60,600 proposed and adopted in 15, 16 to 79,877 in this budget with the changes as noted. When you're looking to make cuts and adjustments to your town department accounts in terms of changes, we need to look at what you're doing without, you know, where you're spending your outside money to.
My suggestion would be to maintain what we did last year with the same appropriations that we had.
I agree with that. Do we have to?
Well, there are public hearings where people tell you what they think. I'm just telling you what's here and why it's here.
So, anyway, we're talking about the general budget, and this was just an adjustment possibly to the general budget. Again, like Susan said, this is open to public hearing, so is there any comments at all on the general fund budget? Anything from the public? Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name is Rick Doyle, and I am the president of the Board of Bucksport Bay Healthy Communities Coalition. Ms. Lazar just made reference to our request for this year, and she noted that our request this year is for 15,000. James Bradney, who was our health planning director until earlier this spring, came in and spoke to the town council, I think it was in April, about a request that he had made, that we were making for an additional $7,400 for the Thriving in Place program. So, what this represents, this total 15,000 is $7,600 that approximately that the town has allotted for every year for going back for a number of years. My understanding is that the town has allotted about that same amount since 2001, or 2000 maybe, so about 16 years. So, there's that regular allotment, and then this year, we're asking for 7,400 on top of that specifically for the Thriving in Place program. The Thriving in Place program is, as I'm sure the council is aware, is a, it's a program that's designed to help elder citizens stay, age in place, stay in their homes, especially elder citizens who have chronic health conditions. The coalition works with 15 partners, including the town and Bucksport PD and Bucksport Regional Health Center and Hancock County Hospice Care, works with all of these partners to bring together the services, coordinate the services that some of Bucksport's most vulnerable citizens need in order to stay in their own home to be healthy. It's a really important program, and my understanding is that it was, that these needs of Bucksport's elderly citizens were recognized in the previous comprehensive plan for the town, and they were also referenced in the comprehensive plan that Mr. Fitzgerald spoke about at the last meeting a couple of weeks ago. In fact, he made reference specifically to the Thriving in Place program and to its significance as an asset for Bucksport. These folks are some of our most vulnerable citizens, and they need our help, and the Thriving in Place program is a good way for Bucksport and its, and the people of Bucksport to provide the help that these folks need. And I would just note that the Thriving in Place program is funded by, mostly by the Maine Health Access Foundation on a three-year grand, or a three-year cycle. The first year started, year one started in November of 2014. At that point, we were funded at a certain level, and then the next year, 2015, we came down a little bit. So, we started at $89,000, came down in year two to $66,000, and year three, which starts on November 1st of this year, brings us down to $47,000. So, we're seeking other forms of funding and to support this program and to make it sustainable, but we do need some assistance, and that's the basis of this request. So, we're asking for, I just want to be really clear, that we're asking for the usual allotment that we get plus this money that will help us to make Thriving in Place a sustainable program. And that's what it consists of. And I would ask the council to consider that in its deliberations about what to do with this item. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public on the general fund budget? Yes, ma'am.
Val Schaffner from the River Road. I just want to follow up on what Rick said. I've been working as a TIP Coordinator Assistant for the past year and have seen the many benefits derived by its participants. I've attended team meetings with the TIP partners with the needs of each participant. I discussed some solutions to problems we arrived at through this roundtable forum of information sharing about programs available through local, state, and volunteer organizations. One of those volunteer organizations is a local program called Community Action Resource Exchange, which furnishes transportation and companionship. Calls for volunteers to care are received at the Healthy Communities Office, but the program is sponsored by the Methodist Church. Some of the specific services which TIP has furnished to its participants are companionship to an elderly lifetime resident who has given tirelessly to the needs of others, the recent creation of a scholarship funded through donations at the senior center, which furnishes a once-per-week activity and meal fee for those who cannot afford it, installation of handrails to prevent further falling accidents, installation of a handicap ramp at the home of an elderly citizen, and assisting the family of an Alzheimer's patient to obtain in-home care. Thank you.
Any other comments on the general fund budget?
I'd like to follow up on what the previous two speakers have said. My name is Sue Davis. I live on the Bucksport, on the Bucks Millsburg. I'm a retired home health and hospice nurse, and I have the privilege of being on the care team that meets to coordinate the services to the TIP participants. And I would like to tell you that it has been a wonderful experience for me to be able to bring to that team all I learned prior to my retirement and to see resources being able to be put together that were very difficult for me to access for patients when I was working as a home health and hospice nurse. These are what we would kind of call wraparound services. They are the things, some of the things that Val Schaffner just mentioned that are so crucial to people being able to stay in their homes but are not funded by any insurance, are generally available to people unless they have the money to pay for them. She talked about ramps that have been put up, guard, handrails that have been put in to make people safe, access to programs that this, members of our team know about, which are not known generally to say a home health or a hospice nurse, such as a special pot of money at the state level that can be used to bring in some services, such as homemaker services or in-home supports for respite for people, special programs for people with dementia. We have been able, because we sit and share our knowledge with each other, to bring these to bear in our community. And I believe that this is going to be recognized by the funding agency as a model program that hopefully can be replicated in other communities. So, I really would encourage you to think about helping the TIP program stay in Bucksport. Thank you.
Any other comments? Any item of the general fund budget is up for discussion?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
The additional money that they were just talking about, is that in the budget now? So, that being in it, it's still, it's exactly how you just presented it?
Is that with the entire 17?
Entire 17.
Okay.
Mr. Key, is it possible to maybe negotiate an amount that's different than what they're requesting as far as, as far as like a $2,500 increase, especially for them actually being here to actually request it and talk about it? It's very, it's kind of changed my feeling about it, so.
Did you entertain a motion?
No, we haven't really, we're just talking.
Down under the resolve to adopt, just when you, this is just a head. Can I ask a question? Mr. Doyle, are your other partner communities contributing to Thriving in Place in this coming year?
I think the answer to that is yes. I'm going to turn to our.
That is my understanding.
Our interim treasurer is here.
They did last year.
They did last year contribute to Thriving in Place or contribute to Bucksport Bay Healthy Communities?
To Thriving in Place, specifically, correct.
I believe that that's correct.
Because there was not a request here for Thriving in Place last year. There was just the request for the regular 76.
That is correct.
Hundred dollars.
Yes.
Because of the grant level of funding that you had received. Is that?
That is correct.
Yeah. And approximately, can I, how many people are you serving?
Right now, we have, I think it's a little over 20 enrollees. I think it's actually around 25, and there have been some enrollees that have actually passed away since they were enrolled in the program, which is, of course, something that's contemplated. We have, in our grant proposal, we set targets for trying to increase enrollment, and we are making progress, I think it's fair to say. I would note that I saw an email just today from our contract officer from Maine Health Access Foundation, really sort of singing the praises of the Bucksport TIP program in comparison to other TIP programs. I think there are eight around the state. This is really a shining star of a program. It's gotten a lot of recognition at the state level. Unfortunately, one of the things that has really come clear to us in the last few months is that when we, while, when we had first submitted this proposal, we had anticipated, I think with some reason, that there was going to be funding coming along from the state, from the Office of Aging and Disability. We have learned in the last few months that that is, that is not viable, that it's not going to work. As I said earlier, we're looking for other sources of funding, and this request to the town is really in the nature of. to the town is really in the nature of something to keep this program alive as we continue to, to build sustainability.
Thank you.
What would happen to these twenty-five, twenty-seven families if these funds, if this, if that's, this amount was not awarded? Where would they continue to get these services from? I speak as the oldest and I say most mature member of the council.
Mr. Key, I, it's, it's hard for me to imagine an alternative to TIP in this community. There just isn't. It's, it's, you know, the other speakers gave you some specifics about how this program actually works. If this program, if this program weren't there, there's nothing else to my knowledge that would replace it. The, just to, just to put this request in context, a little bit of context, one of the, one of the services that the program provides is a home health nurse who comes into a home, assesses each enrollee, talks to that enrollee's doctor's office if, if necessary, assesses medical needs, things like medication and, and whatnot, and, and then provides some support, you know, following up on all of that. The cost of that yearly, I understand, we have a contract or a memorandum of understanding with, with a, a home health provider in Hancock County, and the cost of that yearly is, is around six thousand dollars. Bucksport Regional Health Center is a, is a partner in the TIP program, but my understanding is that they're not licensed or certified as, as a home healthcare agency. And so, that's why I say, I think if, if the TIP program doesn't survive, you know, and perform at the level it's performing at right now, it's really hard to imagine what the alternative is.
You, you mentioned that at the present time, you had a three-year funding program. It started out at eighty-nine, went down to sixty-something, going down to forty-seven. Is this the last year of it?
Yeah, this, this is, year three starts November first, two thousand sixteen, this year.
Okay. And you're applying for additional funding revenue streams?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Yeah.
If, if the council approved this, how would that affect the, any future grants or any funding going forward? I guess what I, the point I'm making is that if we approve it now, does it mean next year, because you've lost the other forty-seven thousand, you're gonna come back and ask the town for another twenty-five, thirty, forty thousand or something like that?
I can't imagine that. I think that, I think that what this, what, the answer to your question really depends on the specific fund, the specific grant that we're talking about. Different grantors look for different things. The, I, I think if, to generalize, I think grantors look for some kind of input from the, from the community, from the town. So, I think it, it strengthens our ability to, to bring in other grant money if we're receiving money specifically for this program from the town. I don't think, we're not, we're, we're looking at this more as a stock gap measure than as a, and as a way to, to continue to try to build sustainability than as a, a first step in a, in an effort to replace private funding or, you know, other sources of public funding besides the town.
Now, now that seventy-five or seventy-six hundred that we have given on a regular basis, that couldn't be used for this program?
Well, the, the seventy-six hundred, seventy-five, seventy-six hundred that the town has traditionally given is, is, you know, we have other costs that are related to the coalition besides this program. There are other, other programs that the coalition operates, and those, that, that yearly allotment has traditionally gone to those other, those other things. Those needs are still there. Programs we do with the families of young children and with seniors and things like that.
Okay. Any, any other questions? Any, any further comments? Yes?
I really think we need to look into after what I learned today. I called Virginia for my sister-in-law because her husband's in a nursing home, and she doesn't drive, and she needs one there and back. I called three different senior resources down there, but you could try to get this forty to forty-one dollars there and back. They have nothing like we have here, no volunteers, and I tried to tell them what we're doing here. I said, "We don't have any volunteers?" And they said, "No." I said, "Well, that's a shame." I said, "Why doesn't somebody work on it?" But compared to what we do here in Bucksport, nothing of Virginia, except the taxes cost fifteen dollars there and fifteen dollars back. So, I think we've got a lot to be kind of here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a question?
I just wanted to respond to David Key's question. By having this TIP program and coordinating services for people in their homes who are frail elderly living with chronic conditions, just the number of people who fall in their homes and the hospitalizations that are required if somebody breaks a hip. And I, is Mr. Val in here? Is Chief Val still here? Anyway, our fire department keeps data, and the number of calls that they receive for these circumstances have been ongoing. Preventing just a few of those calls from happening is going to save all of us an enormous amount a month, just by virtue of how costly just a hospitalization for a broken hip is. That's the whole point about why these programs are being encouraged to be embedded in our communities. And, you know, we've talked about this program for years, and I'm gonna shut up right now because enough has been said.
I believe that was the shortest speech I ever heard Mary Jane Bush give.
Okay, is there any other discussions at all on the general fund budget?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
In regard to this particular item, these are certainly some of our most vulnerable citizens, and I'm well aware of the fact that, you know, that we're, we're trying to hold the budget down, but this is really a very small amount to do an extremely amount of good. I think we would be well put to fund this as it is now in the budget.
We can take that up when we get ready for the approval of the resolve. You can make that recommendation. If, if there's no other comments on the general fund budget, I'd like to go on to the, again, the public hearing is open on the sewer budget.
The sewer budget, as presented, the rates do not change. They went up dramatically at the beginning of two thousand fifteen, sixteen. They are generating revenues somewhat in excess of what was anticipated, but not in excess of what the needs for the long-range debt service for the fourteen-million-dollar hole up the street that's getting filled with stuff is going to do. But the sewer budget is paid for entirely with, by sewer users through the rates that they pay. The only amount that the general fund contributes to the sewer budget is fifteen thousand four hundred and twelve dollars as part of a debt service item.
The rates and how they're set and the, and the different classes of rates, and hopefully we can continue to look at those over the year.
Yeah, we need to look at, at our sewer ordinance and, and the apportionment of rates. We had a committee meeting prior to this council meeting to talk about the idea of allowing people, if they did a lot of outside watering and landscaping, to install an outside water meter at their homes so that water that is used for outside purposes isn't, you don't get it as part of your sewer bill, that you can call in quarterly or it can get turned in quarterly to reduce that amount. And the committee was generally supportive of that idea as long as it, you know, had some parameters around it. The difficulty with it is that the minimum for sewer usage is eighteen hundred cubic feet, and if you're using ten, and even if you water six hundred or seven hundred, you're still not at an amount where we can reduce the bill because you haven't gotten to the minimum. So, that's one of the complexities of it. But we have a very complicated sewer ordinance in terms of who gets charged what and how we apportion it across apartment structures, et cetera, and it's not consistent in some ways. So, yes, we will be working on, trying to even that out as best we can.
Any other questions on the sewer budget?
Has the number of meters increased this year, or are we still estimating a great number of people or?
What's that again?
Meters. The meters that they, last year, there was a big question about, you know, how can you tell this guy uses this much without a meter on his house?
Oh, the.
Might I interrupt here just a minute? If you would come up to the front, because the people outside are wondering what the question is and can't understand what the question is from the answers from here sometimes.
I know some people have, have difficulty walking up here, and we're not going to expect them to, to come up.
Yeah.
But you're a young fellow, you can walk, right?
My question was, have we increased the number of meters on homes so that we're not estimating the amount of use and leaving people that aren't using a great deal having a, a minimum and no other way, knowing what they take?
So, the people that have, that, that don't have meters are people not on town water but who are on town sewer. And they're being charged at the rate, by the ordinance of twenty-one hundred cubic feet, or twenty-one as a minimum instead of eighteen. Their, our ordinance allows people who do not have town water to put a water meter on their well and turn those readings in so that that can be addressed. It, it doesn't allow outside meters for landscaping purposes at this time, but, but the, the question of how much, since we base sewer use on water use and we don't have a way to gauge what people who have their own private wells are using, the towns establish the twenty-one hundred cubic feet, but the, the alternative, if we reduce that, is to, it pops up somewhere else in a charge unless people wish to put water meters on their wells and therefore get a more accurate idea of exactly how much, you know, what their sewer bill would look like.
Do I understand you, I'm in that situation, but, so if I put one on there, though, did I hear you say earlier that we don't, our ordinance right now doesn't?
Your ordinance allows people, it allows people who don't have town water to install one so that you can have that, but the ordinance doesn't allow you to pay for less than twenty-one hundred cubic.
Regardless of whether you have the meter on your well or not, you're still gonna pay the twenty-one hundred.
That's what I was getting at. We got a fifty ordinance.
That's, that's the, the basis. Even if you went to, and said, "Okay, on or off, it's eighteen hundred for everybody," that at least is.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any more from the council? If not, we're going to go on to the marina budget. Again, the public hearing is open for the marina budget.
The marina budget is another budget for the town that it does not involve property tax dollars. It is an enterprise account. The costs of operation of the marina are paid for by users of the marina and fees charged for the marina. It doesn't include the revenue from cruise ships to the town dock or those kind of things. It's entirely from slip rentals, gas, sales, et cetera, at the, at the marina. The, the budget is, has in the, in the two years that the town has owned it, netted approximately thirty-five thousand dollars more than it cost for operation. This year's estimate for, is around sixteen hundred. It will be, there will be more revenue than that left over, but that, in building a budget that's, looks somewhat reasonable, we have to put in everything that might happen. But again, this is not a taxation budget. This is an enterprise budget paid for solely by user fees in this system.
Any comments on the marina budget? Any from the council?
Just one about, oops.
Go ahead.
Just one about the management. Did we get that, did they end up getting it for you, because I know there was a question about who was gonna, somebody might take that over.
Here, the current marina manager is agreed to, to the position for the sixteen, seventeen year. There is money in this year's budget to bring someone on for this summer to be trained to take over for the following year, and we will be, as part of my manager's report, we'll be advertising that in the next week to gain a seasonal manager for the marina.
Mr. Mayor? I think that some of you, perhaps, were in the audience when, on June second, when we had a meeting here about the future of the marina and the waterfront as a whole, and I think a lot of our eyes were opened as to, even more so as to what a jewel that is, the marina, and it's the only service that I know of that makes money for the town other than the ambulance corps. All the others, we just pay out money and, and don't get anything back. So, it's a, it's a, it's a self, it's a self-financed thing. It actually makes the town some money, and I, I think that we got a lot of good ideas, that that's, that's a big piece of the building of the future in Bucksport, I think, is that waterfront and marina.
I was gonna say that as well. I echo what Councilor Key said, and I, one question I have is, down the road, we talk about adding slips and some of the great ideas that they had. Is that something that would, again, the marina budget would add, the town wouldn't add into our budget?
Would depend on the nature of what you're gonna do and, and how you wanted to fund it. There's certainly no prohibition. The town could fund it with tax dollars. You made a commitment or a decision at the time, it's my understanding, that it was purchased, that it was not going to require tax dollars. That's my understanding from, from the acquisition. However, what, the, this thirty-five thousand dollars that's netted is thirty-five thousand dollars that stays with the marina. The enterprise nature of it means that at the end of the year, it doesn't lapse to the fund balance of the town. It stays dedicated to the marina, so as you build up funds, that's one. And the other, another good source is grant funding for a lot of work that can be done there.
Yeah, there were, there were several walkaways the other night from that. There are a number of us from the council participated in the meeting. One, we had a fellow from Hancock County Development there, and he was going to, he walked away saying that he looked for grant money, and then a couple of discussions with councilors also pointed out that getting that grant money would probably make sense to put an engineering study, some sort of a study in place to find out what the cost would be to, you know, possibly even double the number of slips out there. I also went down and took Mr. Campbell's offer to walk the marina and chat with the people down there, and quite a bit of the work on marina repairs and so forth are done by them or the town employees over, over the winter. Walking it was really eye-opening to see all the electric, all the water. The marina people were, I think, quite happy with what they have and would like to make it larger. What's, was interesting to me is that cruise ship is not the moneymaker that people would think it is. It's, it's rather a draw on the folks out here, takes up a lot of dock space, and there's some things that have to be looked at for contracts with them because it doesn't look like we're on the proper end of that right now. But those were some of the takeaways from the other night. I think the, the main thing is when, when the council opted to purchase that marina a couple of years ago, everyone said that we are doing it as long as it doesn't become a tax burden on the community. It would have to be a standalone proposition, and if it got to the point where tax dollars were gonna be needed to maintain it and operate it, that, you know, the council at the time said that we would put it up for sale. But, you know, it looks like it's making some money, generating its own revenue so that those revenues could be used for.
that those revenues could be used for matching funds for, for grants to expand it. So I think when that all comes about, we'll have to make a decision, the council will, on whether to keep it or, or sell it off, but-
One very positive note the other night was the conversation around the cost of fuel, that we have a very good fuel price here, which people are coming from quite a way to come up in fuel, and when they do, they get off the boat, they come up and they eat at our restaurants and do whatever they do often, and, but the, that's kind of the lost leader for the town, and we did move a lot of fuel last year, so.
Mayor-
Yep.
Just a reminder that town employees in my department are town employees, not Marina employees, so tasking them to do maintenance on the docks in the winter is a cost to taxpayers? Now, we repair the town docks, it's town property, but the Marina, to expect the town highway department-
Duane, you're exactly right, and, and you know, yes, that's a correct statement.
I don't, I don't believe your, your people have been repairing the Marina docks.
No, but I hear rumors and-
No, I misspoke, you know, they were telling me about, they, they took me over to the, to the other side and were showing me the repairs that-
Right.
I misspoke.
There is a separation right now, but-
But I, I do think, I mean, the theme that I heard was that this is a, this was spent, this is a jewel that we have here, and it may come a time where, as a, as a town, as a council, that we want to invest some money into some, some of the waterfront and the, and that Marina, to make money.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I agree with, with what the past council said on, on having to run it, you know, not using tax money, but just right now it's making money, makes enough money to keep going, for the expansion, it could make even more, and bring people in, and make more money for the people in town. I think it's a great, great asset.
Any other comments on the Marina budget? If not, we're going to go on to the capital improvement budget, Susan?
Okay, the capital improvement budget is part of your general fund budget, but it is included in that first budget that was discussed. What this does is itemize or identify more what the plans are for use of funding from capital reserves during 2017, and in some cases, the appropriations are appropriations to stay current with projected future expenditures for equipment, and in some cases, as is identified in the capital this year's, that it is the purchase of some equipment, investigation into broadband, some paving of parking lot, some work at the public safety building, some more work at the town garage, and converting the entrance to this building to handicapped accessible in terms of the push-button doors for the front, to look for a new phone system for the, for all town buildings, and a compactor trailer for the transfer station, the, the potential uses, but the, the proposed appropriations for 2017 are split into two things, one is tax appropriation, and one is appropriation from undesignated fund balance, and the appropriation from undesignated fund balance, the amount of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, is funds that are appropriated for that purpose to catch up what didn't get done last year and keep us on track to be able to do the work that's necessary with equipment replacement or projects in the future, and so that the fiscal year 2018 appropriation will look like the three hundred thousand dollar column, not with that additional hundred and sixty thousand.
Any comments from the public about the capital improvement plan? From the council? If not, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed. Public hearing's closed, we're going to go on to item seven, new ordinances to be considered or introduced, I don't believe we have any tonight. We're going to go on to item eight, discussion items, managers clarification, direction, or council discussion or input on issues, first one being eighteen sixty-one, State Route Forty-Six foreclosure code violations.
You have information in your packet from both myself and the code officer. This property most recently went into foreclosure status in December of 2015 for the expired 2013-14 property tax lien. Subsequent to that, earlier this year, Mr. French came in to ask about redeeming the property from foreclosure, had a discussion with me, and I outlined, as it says here, what my requirements were to do that. Subsequent to that, I had a discussion with the code enforcement officer about the code violations on the property, and he has memos here about that. The reason it's here is that I made an agreement to allow a payment system if the trash portion of things was cleaned up within the thirty-day period, that did not occur, and as I told you when we did, we talked about foreclosures some time ago, that everybody had a chance, and that that happened, that, and I was unsuccessful, and I was, that it would then be up to the council to determine what the next step would be. I, I believe the code officer has information, and I believe that Mr. French is here this evening and may want to also address the council in regard to this matter, but the, the town has legal ownership of the property at the present time because of the expired tax lien, and that was true for the 2010 tax lien, the 2009 tax lien, the 2008 tax lien, the 2011 tax lien, the, in 2000, there's a sheet here, provided a copy to Mr. French as well, that shows the payment history, prior to one payment in April of this year, the last payment was made in 2013, which is how we got to foreclosure, the three years that elapsed and the interim is what pushed it over the edge. But, as I said, our code officer has information and Mr. French, I believe, and perhaps others which do address the council in this issue.
Jeff, do you have any comments?
Forty-Six, this picture was taken this morning to give you an idea of what the property looks like from the front. As the information you provided with mentioned, there was a notice of violation issued in November of 2014 that addressed this issue, which was a large pile of household trash and miscellaneous junk, as well as other junk spread around the backyard. Closer-up view of the, the large pile. The order required that this debris be removed or properly disposed of within thirty days, and it was not. Last month, I paid a visit to the property, and this is what the backyard looks like now, you can see the area where the pile was, is, is gone, some of the material that mixed in with the piles was separated, set aside. And this is where I believe most of the household garbage ended up, in this area, here, you see this disturbed soil, information that's been given to me by the neighbor indicates that there was a small backhoe on site that dug a hole and disposed of the trash that was left over after the larger bulky items were separated out of it. That also was a violation of state and our town ordinances. This is nearby, it shows trash has been pushed over a bank and partially covered, this is household waste here. And then up in here, the next photo, you'll see there's, there's some more, some attempt has been made to bury it. Large pile of junk behind an outbuilding. This is all, by the way, what I observed just this past month, in May. And this is another large pile, this is actually behind the disturbed area I just showed you earlier, this is a closer-up view of that area. Miscellaneous scrap metal items. And this is the, the back of the house as it was then, already another pile of household garbage since its beginning, not being properly contained as are required by our ordinance. So those are the issues that I identified. This has been a longstanding issue, I've been involved with this property actually almost from the day I started working here, at the time, as another owner, and there were other issues, but there's always been an issue of nuisance conditions, mainly dealing with junk and trash, dilapidated buildings, and I've also received complaints about malfunctioning septic system and burial of automobile parts, that may have gone, that may have happened in another era under another ownership, but it's still, it's still a concern, very much of a concern, to neighbors who worry about the possible impact to their wells from the buried materials, some of which would be considered to be hazardous contaminants. The property owner at the time has either been uncooperative or only marginally cooperative, has said the violation notice I issued in 2014 was not, the order was not met, and I, I dealt with it again when I received a call informing me that the burial activity is the place of the property. So this matter is here before you this evening to ask for your help in determining what should be done, what resolutions should be met to deal with these issues. Any questions?
Thank you. Is Mr. French here?
I was told by someone here that I could speak freely during this meeting and speak my mind and, and make some key points to this whole thing, and I have a letter here where I am a plumber, and I have worked over ten years for three different companies as a plumber, and Jeff has been to my house since '08 when I bought the house, because he had history with the previous owners, and as he stated, there was things that happened in the past, it was a garage next to the road that was very bad, took and demoed it myself, well, my wife and I and everybody, and the pictures that he just showed you, I have pictures on my phone now that I can show you, or on my wife's phone, what it actually looks like. I've had nothing but trouble to the point where I had to come, and Roger Raymond and I had a, a good relationship together, and I went to him and I explained to him that Jeff was, I felt was harassing me because he was coming, the people that were calling were evicted from the property, and I explained this to Jeff, and Jeff came for repeated, the same thing repeatedly over and over again. So if you look at the paper from Jeff, you'll see from 2009 to 2012, the harassment kind of stopped, he stopped coming around because Roger Raymond agreed with me that this was becoming a nuisance from the neighbors calling and repeatedly doing the same thing over and over again. Jeff has been under my house six times, he's been in my house six times, he's been behind the house and never smelled sewer. One of the complaints from the neighbors was that they could smell my sewer, mind you, they have horses and dogs kennelled between my property and their property, they have pigs, they have chickens, I have a farm on the other side of me, how you could possibly smell my sewer over all that is beyond me. Jeff has stood right there where the septic tank is several times, matter of fact, six times to be exact, and every time is stated that he never smells sewer, he goes under the house, there's no pipes leaking, and by code, you only have to have a hanger every four feet, I've got one every two, to make sure that it doesn't sag, where I once did, worked for F.L. Davis, I was told that you did not have to have a permit to fix an existing foundation. I've got over fifteen years' experience working on houses, I've worked for Paul Hanson, Dan Burpee, I worked for the home, the owner of House of Pizza, I've done three remodels, I've worked for Rose Josia, which is a lawyer, I have an upstanding record for my work, I show up on time, and that being said, I work on a lobster boat on top of trying to work on my business, so I felt like trying to live in the house and fix it with the amount of children that I had was becoming a nuisance, and I moved to, and I did leave the house for a while, and me and Jeff did have discussions, but back to what I was saying about him inspecting the house, he'd been there several times-
Try not to focus on personalities or, or people, discuss the violations.
Yes, well, the violations is what I'm getting at, is that he's been there, if you read down through, they're all the same. He came to my house on one occasion because of the garage, said there was trash, if you look at this, it looks like I haven't cleaned up the trash, which is not exactly the way it is. He came to the house, said that the garage was a nuisance, so I took, and was starting tearing down the garage, there was trash bags in bags in the front of the garage, he said the neighbors complained, said that they could see the bags because there was no garage door. So my grandfather gave me a utility trailer, I put the trash in the utility trailer, in bags, not exposed, he said, he came up the next week, said that the neighbors complained saying that the trash was visible by the road and it was in, that it was a nuisance, asked me if I could do something about that, so I went and spent the money and bought a green tarp that matched the color of the trailer and put it over the trash bag so you couldn't see it whatsoever. He then came to my house a couple of days later, said the neighbors complained because the trash was still visible being in the trailer, he asked me if I could please put the trailer out back of my house where it wasn't visible just to please the neighbors, and I asked, well, why can I cannot keep a utility trailer and haul it once a week to the dump? He said that it was just becoming a nuisance with them calling, he, he comes to the house about my septic tank repeatedly for the last, since 2000, and like I said, or repeated again, has passed it every single time, says that he doesn't smell sewer, doesn't see leakage, nothing, he stood right where the tank is, he has no evidence of anything. In his letter, he states here that my neighbors told him that I have oil barrels in the tank. He stated in here, in his words, quote, in his paperwork, that I have oil barrels for a, a septic tank. Now, how can he go by a rumor from somebody that has lived in the house next door less than the amount of time that the place was built next door, which, so they would have no knowledge of that septic tank being in that ground? Therefore, I would like to know where he's coming up with these rumors, he's taken rumors from people next door that don't get along with us and using them as his evidence to, now, my Uncle Lloyd took four truckloads of trash to the Suri dump, that pile you saw that he's saying I buried into the ground, I was told him honestly that it was old wood from when the camper burnt down behind the house, the tractor was there to back- The tractor was there to back drag the glass and the debris from when the camper caught on fire out back. The, as you can see in the pictures, we separated the beds, the metal, the couches, the stuff you saw behind the barn. Jeff told me to, before with the trailer, to keep things out of sight, I told them I was going to get a roll-off dumpster, which I plan on. But life is sort of like running a town. You live on a budget and you have certain resources you can use and not use. And I have six kids, so not all the time can I afford to just run out and go pay the kind of money that some people can. And I've done the best that I can. Now, I could show you the pictures, which I'd like to, on her phone of what the property actually looks like now. And the other thing is, when I did the foundation work, Jeff came to me and put a card on my door and said, because my understanding was I didn't need one, so he came and put a card on my door and wanted me to call him. I called him. He said that I was supposed to have a permit for that. So then I came, met with him here. He said I had to pay a $25 late fee because, and I could apply for a permit, which I did, and he approved it. Said that he would have to come out and inspect my son tubes. Didn't bother to come out and inspect my son tubes, but he made a big scene of that. Now, I brought him into the house the last time he came. I find it weird that, since '09, there's seventeen times here that he's been to my house. I counted on his paperwork. In some reason, what relevance, a letter from somebody from 2005, three years before I owned the property, is in this paperwork, I have no idea, but seventeen times he's been to my house. All for the same thing. Every time he's passed it, all but the trash has been a part of the issue. But the septic part, and to state that it's an oil barrel without actually having any valid information to prove this is kind of ridiculous. He, I flushed the toilet for him, it didn't flush the first time. Now, I've done plumbing for ten years, there's a lot of toilets out there in this world that you have to hold the handle down to flush it and get it to go down the first time. So he's telling me that I have a failed septic system because, and then, and right in front of him, I waited for the tank to fill back up and flushed it, and it flushed it as far as the second time. And furthermore, the other argument I have with my harassment, that I feel I'm being harassed by Jeff Hammond, is because all seventeen times he's been there, there was never an altercation, there was never a raised voice, there was never a problem with me, and I showed him what he wanted to see. This time, he decided to bring an officer with him for some reason and wanted to, and wanted to make a big scene. Well, I did, in my defense, he told me to put the trailer out back. Everything that's behind, that you can see behind that barn is plastic four-wheelers that we bought the kids, tires that we separated, nothing of any form of trash. It's all kids' toys, basically, big plastic toys from the last twelve years of whatever buying, every single year we buy them something. And then the bags that you see behind the house that I knew was not home trash, and he didn't bother to go look into the bag, or he would have saw that they were clothes that we were throwing out, and then bags were gone. They were in the process of being moved when he showed up because the pickup was there getting more material going. And if you would like, you're more than welcome to see the pictures. Me and Sue, I did not come meet with her. I called her on the phone and discussed what was going on. And she told me, because Betty was out cleaning and Dave Winchester showed up and said that the house was under foreclosure, that we weren't supposed to be there, that he was told it wasn't our house no more. So I called Sue and I said, what is the deal? I mean, is it, is it our house or not? So she made the deal for $125 a month. I paid the $125, which is this payment right here on here. Then next thing you know, Jeff Hammond came out and did his thing. And flat out in front of Dan Harland, you're more than welcome to ask, the officer ain't going to lie, and Shelby and Jenny and Evelyn was all standing right there when he's flat out said he was going to inform the state inspector he found no, nothing wrong with our septic, and that he was going to make sure that he let him know he didn't have to come to the house. So I came on the first and left this note for Sue because I came to make my $125 like I was supposed to, and I was refused payment because Jeff had talked to her. Well, I don't know a whole lot about the law, but I talked to somebody that used to be on this council, and they said that they were unaware that a code enforcement officer could make a decision for you to, had anything to do with paying your tax bill. But that's basically the sum of what I'm trying to say, is that life really is run sort of like a town. I mean, you can only work with so much budget. And I have not had many resources throughout the years, and now I have way more resources. I have got Xavier Bussey that owns Duffy's. He's a very close friend of mine. He owns an excavator, he owns dump trucks. He's, oh, that was the other thing I wanted to mention, was that Jeff, I told him, this summer, I will pay for a septic and a leach field. I'll pay, he gave me a name of a guy that was cheaper than the one that I got for a, for a septic design. I told Jeff that I would like to end this debate just as much as anybody else. I'll pay to have a septic design come, put in. And I told him that, I told Sue that this summer, I work on a lobster boat and I make real good money in the summer. I'll pay the $2,000 off for the taxes. There won't be any back taxes. I mean, if you see here, we have made an effort. In 2013, we paid off all the taxes. When we acquired the property, we were unaware that we were still holding Joey and Roxanne's tax liens against the house. And we thought we were just going to get the house and that we kind of, I miss, that was my bad. But long story short, we did pay in 2013 and got caught up, and then we went back into hard times a little bit. But now, I've been on a boat for three years, it's not like I just started. And I make, I just got a good raise, I make really good money. They're coming, and I'll pay the $2,000 off. And I can show you the pictures right now on her phone of what the place looks like right now. And I told Jeff when he was at the house that I'll pay for a septic design to come, I'll pay for the tank to be put in. Aaron said that if you guys need to contact him, you're more than welcome to take his number down, and he's got an excavator, dump trucks, the whole nine yards. He's going to come out, dig the hole for my septic. I've installed leach fields and septic tanks for Percy Brown, I work in DRL. As a homeowner, I'm allowed to do that. And, and we're talking, I've already looked into it, it's $1,000 for the tank. American Concrete will come and set it into the hole when you dig the hole. I showed Jeff the plumbing inside my house. My house is only forty feet by thirty-some odd feet, and it is above what the code inspection is. It's got two, three main stacks that go out for the vent. And most houses, as you can tell, a lot of small houses only have one three-inch vent that goes out. It's got more than enough venting system with a new tank to end this dilemma, would be well worth it to me, and, because I'm sick of the, of the ongoing seventeen times coming out to my house for a septic tank. And I would like to show you guys, have her show you the pictures of what the place looks like right now, because it doesn't look like that. And that gives you a mis-
So are you suggesting that the pictures you showed us are not the pictures today, you're saying?
He's not taking recent pictures now.
Or this week, or when did you, Jeff, when did you say?
They're probably two weeks, about three weeks maybe.
You're saying your property doesn't look like those pictures now?
I told, no, it doesn't. And I told Jeff when he came there, that he has an eight-foot big 2500 series Chevy pickup truck. We loaded it with contractor bags. He even loads four of them with the trash. The only thing buried was that we back dragged the glass because it was a twenty-eight foot or maybe even longer, it may have been thirty, an older style mobile home that burnt down out back there. And there was glass and whatnot, and part of the cleaner. Clearly, I have children, and I hadn't been living there, I haven't been there to really do anything, and I didn't want them to come back and stay and have any kind of, you know, anything harmful. I mean, you can see that, if I was going to bury everything, why didn't I bury the mattresses and bury the tires and bury the, why did I separate things into piles? Why did I have him come and take four truckloads of trash? And the only thing that was, that was put into them, a-hole, was the rotted up wood that was all crumbling and you couldn't even pick it up. It was pushed with a bucket, it was at an angle, and it was pushed down in, and it was just wood. And it's kind of, there's no harmful materials in wood that I am aware of. The other point that I'd like to make is that Jeff is going along with the neighbors' complaints. I, as a plumber, can tell you that this is a little bit ridiculous, but they're complaining, and Jeff says that he came out to my house, and as a code enforcement, in my opinion, I am just vouching my opinion, which I have the right to do. As a code enforcement officer, you would think you would take a phone call and take the nature of it and kind of base it on professional manner. The neighbor lives four hundred and four, four hundred by four hundred square foot property. Their well is in the center of their property. I own two hundred feet road frontage, my septic is in the middle of my property. So you do the math. Now, they live on a hill above me, and the one joke about plumbing is poop does not run uphill, correct? So they're saying that, they tell and Jeff, that they keep calling them and telling them that they're worried about my septic condemning their, you know, polluting their well. Now, you ask, I'm just asking you, as a human being, how is that even physically possible? It's not possible. And he's going along with these calls, and it's, to me, that just seems like harassment. But, and I, and I've talked to Roger Raymond before, and my proof is in the pudding, and you can call Roger yourself if he's still around and ask him, and, because right there was the years that he stopped coming out to the house because, like I said, I was going to file harassment. And it's, and to me, this is harassment. I mean, over and over again, the same repeated things, and how, we don't even know that it's an oil barrel, and if you read his pamphlet, he states in here that they're oil barrels. I mean, that's a rumor, and he's putting it as a fact. I don't see how that's logical or ethical, but-
Also, part of it is a code violation, but also the foreclosure. I understand you've made arrangements for payments and-
And I admit, I stood up to my end of the deal. I paid the $125 on the first like she asked, and then this last first is the letter that I left with the clerk's office, because they said that it had something to do with code enforcement and that Sue said not to take my payment. So I had them copy this note that I left for Sue to call me because they refused my payment.
May I?
Yes.
Based on the fact that I buried trash, which they had no actual proof of, by the way.
The trash that is, that is along the edge that was over the bank, that you and I discussed, that you plan on getting a dumpster to take care of, was not taken care of. And that was part of our agreement. And the, the fact that the town owns the property at this point allows the town to set conditions on its redemption, meaning, which is why, if you, if the property was not in foreclosure, the town could not refuse your tax payment. The town, the property is in foreclosure. It is owned by the town, and the town can set conditions on its redemption. In my estimation, you did not keep our agreement because that, the trash that was on the property was not dealt with in the way that you told me it was going to be, within the time period that you said it was going to be before you. And in our conversations since then, you have said that you couldn't afford to get a dumpster at this time, in order to do that, and that down the road you would. That wasn't our agreement, which is why the foreclosure part of this sits here and why I refused that payment. That the first payment was within thirty days, the second payment was outside of the thirty days, that we talked about taking care of the trash.
The payment or the trash? What are we talking about?
The sewer system is, is up in the air, but the trash issue hasn't been resolved. It is, the, the bags and the, no dumpster still hasn't been done, right?
Again, we're working on a budget, but if I may, Sue, your discussion with me was actually that I clean up the trash, and when I just talked to you on the phone, when I come in person the other day and talk to you, your exact words, and you can tell me if I'm wrong here, but I quote you on this, was that your decision was based on the fact that Jeff Hammond told you I buried the trash, so you were neglected to take my payment. That was your exact word, quote unquote.
And the bags that are still along the edge of the property with stuff on top of them is trash that is still buried on your property.
Okay. But if you look at the pictures now, I mean, we're doing the best that we can. And so you're going to take a house from five children and over a $2,000 bill, a $60,000 house, that we're in the process of working. Is that even American or ethical to do to somebody? I mean, you're sitting there, you're going to, you're going to take a house for a $2,000 bill when clearly we did make efforts at times, not perfect, but we've paid $1,000 here, we paid $1,800 there. Every chance we've had, there was a, you asked us to make the payment on the first. Actually, the date is the 29th, I paid it before the first, and you just stated that I didn't make the payment on time, and it's dated in fact, yes it is, it's a-
I didn't say you didn't make that first payment on time. That is not what I said. I said that the second payment that I didn't accept was outside the thirty days for the cleanup portion. And, and as I told you in our first conversation, the goal of the town is not to take anybody's property, but the, the, the issue of people making complaints, the town doesn't have the ability to say, if you get ten complaints, you can stop going. That isn't how it works. If there's, if you receive a complaint, in the same way the police department, they can't stop going if people complaining. And Mr. Hammond can't stop going if people complain. The septic system up in the air, the agreement that we talked about was garbage. We talked about trash, the, the fact that it had been an outstanding code violation for the trash since 2014. And so that was what we made our agreement on, that whole historical, the property, the property has been, was foreclosed on every year, 2008, 2009, 2010, 2011. And then in 2013, when you made the big payment, that paid off the current years. And then nothing happened until 2016, when there's, when you went into foreclosure, actually 2015, again. So if you look at the whole thing, the town has to be fair with everybody. Tax collection isn't something that we pick and choose, and, and the longer it goes, the more it is out there, the more it gets spread out over everybody else who does pay their taxes. And that's why, when I say foreclosure, everyone gets a chance, they get a chance, and if they don't, then the council decides.
So you give a person one chance?
I give, everybody gets one chance. That's how many chances. I've been here eight months. I, I have made-
If I may, not to interrupt you, but if I may, I just want to make one more point to the council, is that you're stating that I did not fall within that thirty-day period. Okay? So here we are, this is a fact, okay? Date paid, March 29, 4/29, right? Then this is a month later. The trash was gone.
The trash is not gone.
Sue, the trash is gone.
The trash along the edge-
The trash was gone, I'm not going to argue with you. This is, I made my point, the trash was gone from behind us. I may not have gotten a dumpster, but I was making an effort to clean up the area.
Can I, I guess I'm just lost, why you don't take the trash to the dump?
I did.
I mean, why is it piled, why is it piled up?
Because we were emptying out the house to remodel it, and we put it all out there, and then winter come, we had that really bad winter, and then we couldn't get it out there to get anything out.
I can understand that, but the pictures, what I'm, the pictures I see are not just a little bit of trash that piled up because you run Lloyd. I mean, I don't understand how trash doesn't go to the dump. I guess that's what I'm having a hard time finding.
Because the intent was to go to the dump.
That's where we all put our trash, we take it to the dump.
Right. Well, we're going out through the back of the house, as you can see in the pictures, there was mattresses and box springs and a couch mixed in there, and we're tossing everything out there, and then we're, we thought, I don't know, maybe it was the wrong thing to do. We were thinking that it would be easier to toss it out there and then back the trucks up and load it in, but then we kept getting one winter after another, and then, I don't know about you, but when you ever worked on a lobster boat and you work is at four o'clock in the morning until two o'clock in the afternoon, you're about half dead, and you don't feel like going and doing a whole lot after that. And I did let the house go, that's not a, that's not something I can argue with you about. But I have made an effort, I mean, she's saying that I didn't make an effort from, in this month period, and no, I did not get a dumpster, but it should go looked at positively that I actually took the trash to the dump and went with, instead of just ignoring it and saying, well, sorry, I didn't have the money. I actually made an effort and we took care of the trash. And because Jeff has taken on rumors from, and I don't know what the deal is with the neighbors and Jeff, but he spoke to me on the phone earlier, and he's admitted that it's the Curtis's, and it, if, why don't you look, have you looked at the paper? Any of you? Like, have you seen the repeatedly over and over, same exact thing that he comes out? Now, when does it become a point, when you come out and you inspect the plumbing and you don't smell it or see it? When do you, does it come to a point where you look at the person and say-
Can I interrupt you? We're not here about plumbing, okay?
That's what the code violation is.
We're here because all of the trash out around your house, okay? Don't interrupt me, just let me finish.
Okay, right.
I haven't interrupted you until now. Okay? The town manager, okay, made an agreement with you and your family.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? You owe $2,000 in taxes. Pay $125 a month. You have thirty days to-
a month, you got thirty days to, to clean up all the trash out back. Whether you did it in a dumpster or not, here and there, after the thirty days, you didn't do it.
I did.
Do you have pictures dated before, before your thirty days is up?
Yes, you does. It's, the, some of it is still there, that's what we're saying.
Well, I mean, effort, I guess.
You keep bringing up the, the sewer?
Yeah, 'cause it says foreclosure and code violations on this paper for the town, but it says code violations and foreclosure. And this is the paperwork Jeff gave me.
Code violation is the trash. It's not the sewer, that's our retaliation.
And that's what, again, I'm trying to empathize as much as anything with hard times, John, but trash seems to me, that's an easy thing. If, if the agreement was to take care of the trash, it's hard to be sympathetic if you don't take care of the trash. I can understand, you know, the other things that you mentioned, hard times and those sorts of things, but the trash is, is trash. I guess that's what I'm having a hard time.
Well, I guess that's completely up to you guys, if you feel like you can live with yourselves by taking a house from five kids, 'cause there's a little bit of trash in the yard that we're working on cleaning up and taking care of, and over, and then that's completely yourself to live with, I guess, but...
Well, I just wanted to say, Mr. French, that I've been on the council for seven years, and I would echo the word, not in the business of taking people's, uh, uh, property without going way, way, way out of the way to work with them. This goes back to whatever it was, two thousand and something or other, and I recognize that there are hard times and everything, I have to agree with, um, Councilor Carmichael, that, um, I don't like to take my trash out, but, you know, and your friends obviously came to your assistance, God bless them, and, uh, when they're assisting you, why wasn't, why, why wasn't the ta- trash removed? I gather that some of it was.
This is the point, that you're not listening to me, but-
But I have to take the word of my town manager-
Mm-hmm.
-that if we went out there right now, we would find trash where it shouldn't be. Now, what pictures say? Would that be true?
There's still stuff that needs to be removed, yes. We're in the process of still working on it, correct?
Yeah. Well, you've had many years to work on it, and just, trash just keeps building up.
But when Jeff comes up here and says that the trash is an issue-
That's the part, because we don't wanna throw kids out, out, no, we're not in the business of throwing kids out, but there, Roger Raymond and others, long histories of working people, we don't sit there like vultures waiting to pounce when somebody gets a week behind, a month behind, a year behind, and it takes three years before the foreclosure could even start. So, I, I don't accept the definition that the council's throwing kids out on the street. I think you've made some choices here, that you have to be responsible for.
Well, when we're talking about orders about trash being decided, if you look at the paperwork, and all I'm trying to tell you is that, that if you look at this paperwork, it looks worse than what it is, is, you guys say that I didn't take care of the trash. Well, one of the violations is that I had it in a utility trailer that was, and that wasn't good enough, and then, um-
I think I understood your answer, that there's, if we went out there tomorrow, or tonight, with lights and look, there's still trash there that you were supposed to remove. Why wasn't that removed?
We're in the process of removing it right now.
Been in the process for months and years, I understand.
I haven't lived in the house in years.
When did you move in?
Uh, we just started moving back in it. I rented a thousand dollars a month, was what my rent was, from Dawn Johnson, and, uh, and not to bring up something, and I don't even wanna use her as an excuse, but, uh, 'cause I'm not, you know, but, uh, our granddaughter passed, we had a hard time, we're paid for the, all that cost, I mean, I could've paid for the dumpster then. I chose my family over them. I chose to take and put my family into a better home, because I thought that I could do better, I wanted my kids to have a nice home, just as much as you guys want that place to look nice. I wanted my kids to have a nice home, I went over to ruin it and lived on a house right on the water, paid a thousand dollars a month. I couldn't, I got into times where I was paying, coming up, very hard coming up with the money to pay my rent, and, uh, I mean, I could've put that money towards the house, sure, but, uh, all I can say now is that we decided that we had no other option but to go back to the house. I've gave Jeff multiple choices about my septic to, I don't have to, that grandfather, that's grandfather, and I know we're not talking about the septic, but I'm just saying, like, the trash and stuff, I have, well, I'll just stick onto the trash. I am doing all that I can possibly do with the time that I have to get rid of it, and we've done a lot. The lawn's completely mowed, there's not, I mean, I've gone through and picked up every little piece of paper, every piece of glass, I mean, by hand, and, uh, that garage was hard. I sifted with a fifty-five gallon drum the sand to get all the bolts in, 'cause there was a lot of glass and a lot of bolts, and, and I spread the sand back out after I sifted all the debris out, and took that to the dump, I mean, and then, uh, and I'm sorry, to explain your question, uh, was it the right thing to do? Probably not. The trash out back of the house, the reason why it was there, the, the beds and whatnot, was 'cause I was taking it from the house to work on the house, then winter came, couldn't get out there, and then I got working, things, and I just ignored the house, I, to be honest with you, and now we're putting an effort in on it.
Well, you're telling me, are you telling me, Mr. French, if we went out, since we own the property-
Mm-hmm.
Uh, if we went out there and dug up where that displaced dirt is, are you telling me we would not find trash buried there?
I absolutely am telling you, you're not gonna find trash buried there, yeah.
Mm-hmm. How much longer do you think it would take you to continue to, to get rid of all the trash that's there right now?
Well, I was gonna give myself, and, so that I don't mess myself over with you again, if I had less, two months or maybe a little less. I mean, right now, there, we're getting, we're starting to see shutters, it's not gonna be long now before I start making a big paycheck, and I will make it, if it comes down to me losing my house for my children, or me paying to get a dumpster in there and make every, I mean, I've got Aaron, that said you can call him, he's got an excavator, a dump truck, uh, I'll get the dumpster, and, uh, I got Lloyd, and I've got everybody over here that are willing to step in and throw it into the dumpster, and everything-
Sounds familiar, you know, on a weekend, you get a couple of trucks and stuff-
Yeah.
-piling stuff in there and clean it up.
Right. And we've been making effort as much as possible.
It shouldn't take two months.
Well, I mean, I'm just, I just only, I don't dare to say, I just wanted, I didn't wanna say a month, and, like, I'd hurt and then be wrong.
Well, I'll tell ya, again, David's mentioned it too, the town council isn't in the business of taking people's property away from you.
Right.
Uh, but, uh, you know, the violations and the lack of payment on, on taxes, we have to treat every, every citizen the same way. Um, you know, we thought we had a guarantee with you, that you were gonna get things cleaned up within a month, and, and your payments. So, do we give you another month, or two months?
I know that it doesn't look it-
I would like to go out there tomorrow and just take a look myself, but, you're saying, 'cause I know what we've seen from pictures here, you know, saying it's drastically better than that. Will we find it drastically better than that?
It is better than that in the front, there's no debris, there's no anything in the front, um, uh, to be a hundred percent truthful, the only thing that we haven't gotten to yet is behind the tree there, where the guy accidentally, I don't know why he pushed over there, but we gotta go through that and dig that out and get that out of there, and then, that's, uh, everything else is gone. And then, um, all I can tell you is that if you were to actually give us a chance, then, uh, I wanna bet out, I'm in a different position in life than I was before, and I want a nice home for my kids, I want a nice yard, I want it to look nice, I want new siding, new roof, the whole, new windows in it this summer, that was the whole plan. I was gonna be a drastic change for the house, and it was gonna look very nice. And then I found this out, and it really kinda bummed me out, because I had high hopes to get, you know, my kids a really nice looking house, that, and like I said, I'm in a lot different position than I used to be. I didn't make much money, I mean, I didn't graduate high school, I made, I was lucky to get four or five hundred dollars plumbing. Now, there's a significant, I make about three times that in a week lobstering, and, and I was gonna, I'll do whatever I can to... I don't know if you wanna see these or not, but-
Would the council consider-
Hold, hold it, sir.
Would the council consider, um, just, you don't have to take action on this tonight? If you table this for thirty days, and-
I would, I would be in favor.
See what kind of cleanup occurs within thirty days?
I would be-
My question, Keith, if you guys don't mind, if, Keith, if you, if you, if you had help from maybe even people you know, do you think that thirty days would be long enough to, to do it, make a drastic change there? If, would that be suitable for you?
I tell you, what I can do is, if we, I guess, not worry about getting a roll-off dumpster, and I'll just take the pickup trucks and do it before thirty days, instead of worrying about getting a dumpster out this time.
As long as the trash is moved, I don't think we care how it's removed.
Would it be okay to take it to-
As long as it's in bury.
Transfer station?
Or your property.
How it is?
We're not, we're not in the business to take people's property.
But it's also the town's property, so-
Yeah, it is.
Almost anybody could help, help do it as well.
I mean, if, if you do, you know, and whatever your decision is, is your decision, but if you do decide to let us keep it, I, I mean, from the bottom of my heart, the first goal I have is to get my taxes paid off, so that I don't have to worry about the foreclosure either. I mean, the trash is number one, and then getting the taxes paid off, so I don't gotta worry about being behind to a foreclosure, and then keeping on top of paying the payments. I mean, and, again, I know I've repeated myself, but I'm in a lot different position than I was before. I didn't have very good resources, I didn't have that many people to help us, uh, I was working with what I had, you, I have a lot of kids, um, I could go on and on, but anyways.
I would, I'd like to make a motion to table this for thirty days, and after the thirty days, we come back and take another look to see if there's been any drastic improvement, uh, and if not, we would go, go ahead with, I mean, we actually own the property now.
Right.
Um, we still would like, uh, accept, uh, any tax payments, or-
Thirty days is the cleanup portion of it.
Save your money. Now, the other thing-
You're gonna need it, our taxes if you do it.
Was it, you said you wanted to come out there and see it, or was it you?
Yeah, I think, I think that, uh, when we come out and take a look at it in thirty days, there'll probably be a couple of councilors come out, so that we can have some-
Okay.
Uh, different arbitration about what's been done and what hasn't been done.
We won't accept any tax payment, the dilapidated thirty days are up, and we consider the, the trash situation or violation taken care of, then we can work out a tax payment, is that?
That's right.
Okay? Is that acceptable?
Very acceptable.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to second to table this for thirty days? Anything further from the public?
I got one thing, when you started this, Jeff said that, uh, that picture was taken this morning, and then later on, he had, said it was two weeks later.
No, no personal tax, please.
Thank you guys very much.
Thanks.
Could you give your professional permission, so that he doesn't have any problem getting rid of the stuff up to the dump? 'Cause I, by the looks of the pictures, it's gonna be like glass mixed in with metal, et cetera.
Well, they've, they've been taken to Surrey, I don't know why they've been taken to Surrey, but...
Great, I understand you.
Well, I, I, you know, Surrey won't be happy to hear that.
At least I'm being honest with you.
Well, no, I'm not suggesting you're not, I'm just telling you that, that I'm not gonna encourage anyone to take anything to another community's-
You've gotta, you've gotta try to separate the best you can.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate the thirty days, thank you.
All right. Yeah, we gotta take a vote here, though. Anything further from the council? All, all those in favor of thirty day? Motion passes?
Thank you very much.
All right. Okay, next one is, uh, dilapidated buildings, uh, first one being, uh, Two Noel Way. Jeff?
Some of you may know that it's, it's not very often when I come to you to ask for your help to deal with, uh, layups violations, uh, but I happen to have three, uh, this evening, uh, which is the ones dealt with, uh, the three that, uh, we'll, we'll speak about now are all dealing with dilapidated buildings in the downtown area. First one is, uh, Two Noel Way, the record shows a, a notice of violation was issued, uh, and there was thirty days given to, uh, either repair or move the building, uh, the, there was some work done, uh, and actually, since then, after the thirty-day period, there was more work done, so, uh, I'm gonna be speaking a little bit differently about this property tonight than I may have, if it doesn't give a doubt at all, so. Here's a picture, um, that was taken, um, about a year or so ago, I think, showing the, the large gaping hole of scar inside of this building that was left over after a small addition was taken off by the owner. Uh, you can see there wasn't much done to secure the building. This is what prompted the, the notice of violation. And by the way, this, a common theme also too, for all three properties that we'll talk about tonight, are that they're longstanding nuisance issues that I've been dealing with for, for years and years and years, and this is one of them, this, uh, the record for this one goes back to sixteen years, for one reason or another, it's been issues with this property that I've had to deal with, with some, some cooperation from the owner, but the record showed more often than not, I was getting no cooperation from the owner.
Has the owner been the same for those sixteen years?
Yes, yes, yeah. However, this time, this is what the building looks like today. The owner has filled in the gap, sided, put doors in, secured the openings, put a piece of, um, styrofoam across the opening here where there's, uh, no foundation. Uh, the order was to repair or remove the building in thirty days. I think, uh, the repair's been done, it's not the most attractive repair, but my thinking now is that there's no need for any further action of this property at this time, unless you, unless you believe otherwise.
Are they gonna continue repair?
Uh, that's a question you can ask the owner. We've not, that's Chris Wood, he's here.
Mr. Wood, are you gonna still work on that?
Uh-huh, I'm gonna use it for shore.
You're gonna use it for shore?
Shore to storage, instead of having to drive up to my house and all of it, every time I want to shore a boat or something, I'm gonna go right in there. And, um, there has been a quite a bit of work done to that building since I've been there. No, I've got my-
Come on up here, Kurt, the reason is that the people watching it on TV have a right to hear too, so come on, speak in your light, please.
Now, just a question to go out, is, is there a way that maybe we could give some of these people sixty days instead of thirty days? It seems like, like we're running a little short on time sometimes. I know, I know, I don't know if that's-
I guess I stand up there for a moment. I've had five years on this particular work.
You might make an exception in that case, if you get too tired, and sit back down.
You still wiggle your ears?
What? When you get to be an old fart, it's gonna happen to you too. Uh, some of the things I have done to that building, I've hired an abatement company to remove all asbestos shingles. Um, I, um, removed a large back L on that building. Um, Mr. Hammond visited several times during that process, I'd rather not get into some, um, discussions, not, discussion with me about somebody else that, that was employed by the town. Uh, I don't wanna get into that if I don't have to, if I have to, I will. Um, I have installed vinyl siding over the entire structure. Uh, I had to remove the small L that was, you could see from the highway, because when I bought that property, mainly, stupid, I know it sounds, but evidently, that property was owned by one person at one time, including the house behind it. And the house behind it, the building behind it, I have three units in it, I've had that since about nineteen eighty-one or two. I wanted to replace the water line, because the water line went through the front building, and so I decided, and I always had to worry about the heat tape, so forth, so I decided the best thing for me to do is take that L off, and then have my own, and put in a new water line, which I did last year, I think it was last year. And, uh, so anyway, that's where the reason I removed that L off in it. And, um, my letter said, the, the letter that I got did not give a time, date of completion. Uh, there was no such thing as thirty days in that first letter, and there was no other paper with it in that first letter. The paper that gave, that gave time limits came as the third notification to, a third letter to me, and, um, and I have all that right here. Um, now, what the first letter said for me to do, I have done. So far as I'm concerned, that part is done, the building is not dilapidated, the building is very structurally sound, and probably in all, most, most cases, um, if, if, if the roof is shingled, and the timing matter, like, any roof has to be shingled, uh, that building will be standing long after everybody here is pushing up the daisies. So, and I don't know, um, I have been harassed about that building for some time, and I don't know what the problem is, I, yes, I do understand the problem, when I had to take And I don't know what the problem is, I, yes, I do understand the problem when I had to take that L off, and, uh, I hadn't done anything, but I also had some health issues, and I'm not using that as an excuse. But when I got the letter, I did, in fact, I, I answered the letter, and I said that I will address those issues early summer. Well, that wasn't good enough, but he had given me no timeframe either in that first letter. I didn't know there was a timeframe, I didn't know there was a time factor there when I wrote back. So anyway, um, so I've been working on it, my first priority is the other twenty-six units that I have in town that I take care of. And every one of those units will pass HUD inspection, it'll pass, uh, Main State Housing Inspection, it'll pass NBI Housing Inspection, and, uh, Community Health and Counseling Inspection. So I feel as though, all, all in all, my buildings are very well maintained. I have two buildings across from Hannaford, I feel as though I'm to do, uh, good maintenance on those. I have one behind this building on Noel Way, I have another one at, uh, one fifteen Main Street, and then I have another one up on Franklin Street. One oh one Franklin Street, and, uh, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna bow down to anybody about the way I maintain my buildings. This one, I grant you, that I could've taken care of that earlier, but I did have some health issues and I didn't get to it, but now it's done.
Well, it sounds like the concerns have been taken care of, basically, uh, Jeff has told us that-
Yeah.
He's, he's fine with it, uh, I guess the question was, uh, do you have any long-term plans for it, or?
I'm gonna use it as a shop.
Okay.
In storage.
Okay.
I'm not gonna put people into it.
Okay.
Uh, this, uh, it is, it is secured. The only person that's gonna get in there is somebody that's gonna break in, enter in, I'll have them arrested if I find out anyway.
Okay, all right.
All right?
Thank you.
All right. If I sound a little bit pissy, uh, don't, I'm, I'm getting to be an old bastard. Oh, okay, well, I'll take that, too.
How you know how his fifth grade students don't want anything?
Exactly.
Okay, we're gonna go on to item two, which is fifty-one Main Street.
So this, uh, this is another longstanding nuisance condition that deals with dilapidated garage, or barn as the owner likes to refer to it as.
Can I interrupt you for a minute? I just wanna thank you guys. All right, see you later.
Thank you.
This picture's from two thousand and seven, when I first started getting complaints from a neighbor about the appearance of the, the building. And the record shows that contact was made with the property owner, uh, several times about, uh, the conditions of this building, and the fact that it's in violation of our town code. Assurances have been given to me through the course of that time by the owner that the building will be taken care of. They talk about repairing it one time, and then talk about demolishing it, uh, none of which were followed through. This is what the building looks like now. Still in a state of disrepair, even worse, the fascia boards are starting to fall off now.
Well, the owner, Jeff, the owner wrote us, I think this is one, sent a letter to us, isn't, is, is what was in that letter acceptable to what's gonna happen to this, is that?
Well, I'll, I'll get to that in a second.
Yeah.
The, yeah, so he visited me also too, uh, at the end of the thirty day compliance period, and made the same assurances that when this time allows, he intends to demolish the building. This will be the third time now he's made that claim and has not followed through, so, uh, I just wanna make you aware of that, that I, uh, I haven't been convinced that by the end of the summer this building will be gone, maybe it will, maybe he means what he says now, but he has said that before and not followed through. And I have, I have allowed ample time, uh, for him to comply, uh, with this. Based on his explanations of the difficulty he was experiencing at the time, we talked about it, I said, all right, well, you can take a few more months to get your finances together, and then, uh, and then tear it down. And so that was the understanding I had with him every step of the way, and he's let me down every step of the way. So hopefully, this time he won't, and he'll do what he says, but, uh, this is an outstanding violation issue that I want to bring to your attention, and get your guidance on, on what measures we should take at this point in time.
Where is that exactly?
It's on, uh, on the corner of Main Street and Federal Street. It is visible from, from Main Street, so it is something that people passing by that, that areas have a chance to see.
Was there any mention of whether he planned on taking it down by hand himself, or?
No, we've not talked about that, I, I think probably it'll be, there'll be a contractor involved. But one point I, that I'd like to make is, granted that he's out of town a lot, on job assignment, but I don't understand why he can't make arrangements, nevertheless have somebody take care of this sooner rather than later.
Right.
For some reason, he's hesitant to do that.
What timeframe is the most recent promise?
In two thousand and fourteen or fifteen, I, uh, we had a conversation, but I, I didn't document the actual date, but it's during that time period. Uh, he gave me assurances that their financial situation would soon allow them to address the dilapidated building, and he assured me that, at that time, that the building would be demolished. It turns out, he told me when he visited my office, um, a while ago, that instead of taking his approved financial condition and spending money on tearing that dilapidated building down, he chose to put it into his business. That's what he told me, so, that was a decision he made, but unfortunately, again, it was, uh, backtracking on, on, uh, my understanding of what was gonna happen with this building.
What are, what is our course of action? I mean, what, how can we force that?
Well, uh, here's my suggestion, uh, I would like the council, uh, if you feel comfortable doing this, to establish a deadline. A known date by which this building needs to be taken down and the site cleaned up. If not done by that date, then authorize this action to be taken to court, uh, to seek, uh, secret resolution that way.
Now, would that be in private property, without going to court, there is nothing that the town can physically do about it, right? Is that, that's correct, right?
Well, the town can take legal action, there was a notice of violation issued, the order of correction that was not met.
Right.
So the next step the town could take is to authorize a court action tomorrow. But, but my suggestion is because Mr. Ormsby has informed me, as the town manager and the council, that he surely intends this time to take it down, uh, by the end of the summer, when his schedule allows him to do that. I'd like you to hold to that.
So could we do thirty days beyond the time, we've talked about August here, is that what it looks like?
September thirtieth, September.
September thirtieth, end of the summer.
Well, I, I, I don't see, I mean, we have this letter on file from the owner. Yeah, just came, we have this on file, and if he, if, uh, I gather in here he says by the end of the summer, which I'm told is September thirtieth.
No specific date.
Well, there's a date that is the end of summer, and fall starts. Isn't there on our calendar somewhere?
Yeah.
I think it's September thirtieth, does that sound right?
Mike, what's the date?
I think Mr. Ford-
Twenty-first of September?
Yep.
Twenty-first of September, okay, well, he's got, we got a letter here that says by the twen-, I took it the end of the summer, it'd be twenty-first of September, I hereby declare that, by fiat. That, that is the date, that is the date that he agrees to do it. If he doesn't do that, then we take whatever steps are appropriate after that.
Would you like any help, Mike?
Is that, is it, would that be satisfactory with you?
Well, okay, I'd like to make a motion to table this until the second meeting in September, so that, that is beyond the September twenty-first deadline. Is that what I'm hearing, Mike, that you think you'd deal with that before September twenty-first?
Yes, I, I, my job in Booth Bay comes, ends at some time in August.
Okay.
And the other times I've told Mr. Hammond I've removed the building, everybody's lives revolve around, you know, different things that they have no control of. Though, when I told him I was soon gonna have money that I'd be available to do that, my mother had passed, we put her house on the market, I expected to sell it. Well, two and a half years later, it wasn't sold, we practically gave it away just 'cause it was costing us money. So, and when I added the addition under the shop, which I had to do to accommodate what, what I was doing, a fifteen thousand dollar job turned into a thirty-two thousand dollar job. So my ability to make money was more important than tearing that down, yes, but it will be down by the end of the summer.
Again, I, I, we have a motion, a motion is seconded, uh, to table this until September twenty-first. Anything further from the public? Mike, you have anything else to say about that?
Nope, uh, I, I just, I want it down too, I, I don't like it any more than anybody else does.
You said September twenty-first, but you mean the second?
Second, right, yeah, right, second meeting in, in September, okay?
Yep.
Anything further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes, thank you.
I got back and I, I was watching some of this, and I finally decided to come over, so.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, third one being Fourteen Buck Street. Third and final one.
So this, uh, again, is another longstanding, um, building that, um, is a dilapidated building. Violation notice was issued for this property too, and the order was to either, well, there was, there were two orders. The first was an order to, uh, secure the building, at the time it was unsecured, and there are people getting into it. So securing it resulted in the, the first floor windows being boarded up, uh, and, and on the back and sides as well. The second part of that order was to either renovate or remove the building in thirty days, as provided for by our, our building ordinance, that wasn't done. No work at all has been done inside, this is a rear shot showing, uh, this is a recurring problem here, this, this was, uh, one of the issues I had about the building being unsecured. Uh, there was a piece of plywood over that at one time that the owner put in response to my concern, but it's missing again, so, it's pretty easy to get into the basement through that hole there. I'll show you the pictures of, of, that, uh, I took inside, the owner did give me permission to go into the building, so we went in and took several pictures, but when I'm all done showing the pictures, I'm going to speak differently about this property. But I do wanna show you what, what I found to be of great concern inside the building, as well as the deterioration on the outside. It's the first floor, hallway, stairs leading upstairs. You can see there's a fair amount of water damage that's taking place. It's, uh, representative of the bathrooms throughout the building. This building, by the way, used to be one family who broke it up into apartments at one time. Uh, I don't think that was done by the current owner, but, uh, this is a bathroom in one of the apartments. This is a kitchen in one of the apartments, do you see this green here? That's actually moss growing on the plaster that's fallen off, uh, the ceiling there. That's, that's a piece of plaster, I think, there. Well, you wanna get Wayne, but. Here's up, up in the attic, you can see, uh, there's some daylight showing here, uh, there are holes in, in the roof, so water is getting in. Not a whole lot of water now, but there is water coming in. And that's all I had to show you on, on that property, I did receive a call today from Tom Parker, the owner of the property, who has now, um, taken action to deal with the issue that has been brought to his attention. His solution is to, uh, enter into a sales contract with, uh, Wayne Hanscom, who's here tonight. Wayne, as I, as I understand from Mr. Parker, he tends to renovate the building. Uh, that's his trade, he's, he's in the business of renovating buildings, particularly historical buildings. So, um, my feeling now is that this, this issue is going to be resolved, not immediately, but I think the issue that Mr. Parker had throughout all this, and he also wanted to renovate the building, but the problem he was having was the lack of sufficient finances to do that. He even went so far as to prepare a plan of restoration, which must've cost him so much because he hired a professional to prepare that plan, but nothing in the plan was ever done. And that was because he simply didn't have the resource to do it. So, I haven't had a chance to speak to Mr. Hanscom about his intentions, but, uh, I'm encouraged that this building could end up being saved rather than demolished.
So the taxes are up to date on that?
Yeah, I don't believe it's anything-
This is not a foreclosure issue?
I don't understand, um, I mean, you have certain authority as code enforcement officer, I, I'm not quite clear on why these matters are coming to the council. Maybe the first one we heard, but the second too.
Well-
Don't you have the authority under, uh, our statutes and codes and what have you to do whatever you're gonna do and carry it out?
And I've done that.
Yeah.
I've done, my authority, uh, is to identify violations, uh, deal with them as I do appropriate, and in this case, because all the issues that were brought to you tonight were longstanding issues that weren't being resolved. So my final action is to issue a violation notice, which is a formal action that I take under my authority to resolve the issue. It involves an order of compliance, and if the order of compliance is not met by the violator, then my only other recourse is to come to you and ask permission to take the matter to court. And that was my intention-
Are we at that stage with these?
Well, that was my intention on all these issues, uh, except perhaps for the, the first one that dealt with the town-owned property. But these three dilapidated building issues, uh, my intention was to ask you to, because, because of the failure of the owner to comply with the order, to take the matter to court, to ask the court to resolve the-
Right.
-violations. But that turns out to not be needed for the building at Two Noel Way, and I believe for, for this property as well.
But that gained sense after this was placed on the agenda?
Yes, right, exactly. Unfortunately, sometimes it takes the drastic actions to get the attention and get actions from property owners, violations of the property.
On this property here, it, it's a public safety issue also, I, I feel.
Yes.
Because of the fact that people can get in there, it's really dilapidated, uh, you know, subject to possible fire or something like that, if, you know, vandals or somebody-
Yeah.
arson or whatever, um, and is this purchase and sale agreement have any deadline on, on when that has to be brought up to standards or up to code? Or is, I, I, you know, you're talking expensive proposition, I think?
I'd figure it right around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I mean, do you plan on doing this now, or five years from now, or ten years from now, or?
Well, I would secure the building, get it to, you know, so it ain't leaking, probably remove all the debris that needs to be removed, and then work on it as I go, keep it, you know, just.
That's quite a project.
It's a really big overhaul, but I think not bigger. One, one point I'll make too about the, the appearance of the building, back to, uh, this appearance of the building, it, it tends to, to contribute to a blighted appearance of the prop, of the neighborhood. It's the boarding up that does that, and, you know, the boarding up is something I ordered to be done because of the concerns about securing the building. But if the property's being managed, which I'm sure it will be if, if it's under a local ownership versus one who lives in, uh, in Massachusetts, then a closer eye can be kept on that, to make certain that when you put windows in there, or open the windows up again if they're not broken, that, uh, the building's not gonna be vandalized.
Now, with a purchase order, does the, does everything kinda start over again? I mean, would you have to put the code violations into some other kind of redo of a sort? I know, I'm saying that properly, but-
Well, my, my goal, my policy has always been to work with the property owners, to make volatile cooperation and compliance to deal with, uh, issues, and sometimes I'm successful, and sometimes I'm not. I feel confident, though, that it will be with Mr. Hanscom, except we haven't had a chance to talk yet, but, but I have a good feeling about this. So, I'm not thinking that really anything further needs to be done at this point in time to deal with the condition of this building.
Maybe you could keep us updated on it?
Is there a timeframe for the purchase and sale agreement to go through?
Uh, I'll ask that question of Mr. Parker, he wasn't sure exactly when, when there'll be a closing on the property or something of that nature, so.
Can we get that back window boarded up before that?
Certainly, yes, I think probably, uh, Mr. Hanscom will take care of that, right? Yeah, I will definitely get on, on something like that. I haven't had a chance to talk to Mr. Parker a hundred percent about purchasing it, I wanted to see where the town stood on this whole thing, because, you know, like, it can't be saved.
Can we take, can we, can we take action saying that, uh, by the end of September, the purchase has to go through, or we will take enforcement action? Cause if, if, if the sale doesn't go through, is Mr. Parker not gonna do anything to the building again, until another- building again until another purchaser comes along?
I don't have much confidence that Mr. Parker is going to be in a position anytime soon to deal with the building at all.
Right.
So, that's probably a fair thing to do, Mr. Mayor, is to, with that condition.
Mr. Mayor, you know, obviously, one of the things we're trying to do is attract people to coming to Bucksport, and as we learned from the town manager's report from the local realtor, that there's been 50 property sales since January of 2015. I want to repeat that. 50 property sales since January 2015, to all those out there saying, "Oh, dear, Bucksport's going down the toilet because everybody's selling their home." Well, not quite true. This is pretty positive news here. And one of the things, when people are looking around, you know, we're trying to polish things up, and if there's a way to maybe even make just the front of this look better early on, things that you're going to have to do anyway, maybe you could keep that in mind to try to polish up the image a little bit, even though.
Make the outside look better.
Exactly, exactly. Just so it's not such a shiny, blank.
But you would have to demo the plaster and anything that's wet inside as well continue off.
Right, right.
But he does not own the building yet, right?
I understand. When that happens, yeah.
One of the issues I had with the building was this front porch was, the supports were gone and it was at risk of collapsing. So, this is one thing that Mr. Parker had Mr. Hanscom do, is to reinforce this porch. There's the same concern with this porch area too. This post here is sitting on nothing. So, under a heavy snow load, I'm worried about that porch as well collapsing. So, those are the things that would need to be addressed, I think. But having somebody local to do this, a local owner, assuming with the resources to deal with this, I think we're likely to see things happen with this building sooner rather than later.
But, I mean, can we set, okay, you've got two months to get your purchases, purchase taken place, or we'll take enforcement action? It sounds like we've given him several opportunities to take care of this building and he hasn't.
How long?
If the sales with him doesn't go through, is, are we going to be back here six months a year from now addressing the issue again? I don't know when the last time Mr. Hanscom's talked with Mr. Parker, but.
I talked to him yesterday.
Okay.
Yeah. I talked to him yesterday.
Do you think September is a good timeframe for you?
By September?
To buy it?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's reasonable. I think that would be.
Let's do another second meeting in September, revisit it.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this until a.
Yeah, okay, I have another question, especially with Chief.
Okay, as soon as I make the motion, all right? We'll come back to the question. I'd like to make a motion to table this until the second meeting in September.
Second.
We have a second. Okay. Now, anything from the public on this? From the council, go ahead.
Okay. With Chief Bowden, Fire Chief Bowden in the room, what do you think about, do we need to, I think it would, recommendation to put a red X on the building until this is sold to secure it and red X it? I went through the building with Jeff, so we're familiar. We shared most of that information with the staff. We have a few properties in town that we keep in mind of what's there if we do get a call. It is a vacant building, however, we know Jeff and I, when we were in there, you could tell somebody had been in there. That's before it was boarded up. We go under the assumption that there's somebody in there, and that we prove otherwise, but we also go at it with the understanding that if we put a crew in there, we're not looking at 10 minutes probably before the whole thing's finished, you know? We do, we do keep an eye on these properties. We don't necessarily do the red X because I think it adds the same thing to it that the Hollywood has. I think Wayne did quite well with that property. It doesn't look like much there, but it was pretty spectacular in its day, so.
Wonderful.
It's been empty for many, many years. I mean, I rebuilt the TDC building up above the library.
Yeah.
And that was completely broadened on the outside and almost to the point.
I go by what the chief says.
I have, by the way, it's hard to see this photo, but right there is a placard that I put on the building to identify it as a dangerous building, so.
Chief?
I'd just like to say, whatever we do, I'd like to see it, make sure that it is secured because we have been in there several times after people, so, no, it's since it's been secured, but as you see, that cellar was boarded up.
That'll be.
We try to keep an eye on it as much as we can, but we have had officers in there on several occasions, going up those stairs and walking across those floors.
Back door here, this door is secure.
It looks like the foundation right there is kind of given way. Or is that a corner?
It's like a bow window.
Just to the left of the opening there? Yeah.
That's a corner.
Okay.
Yes. An angle there. I think that window should be blocked up. Mr. Parker tried to, I mean, he sent me money from time to time, but it was, you know, it wasn't a whole lot of money, and I tried to do what I could with what he sent. You know, if I purchased the building, it's definitely going to have that going to be bricked in, probably most likely.
Okay, all right. Okay, we have a motion seconded, table this until the second meeting in September. Anything further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Thank you. And thank you. Item C, Spirit of America Volunteer Recognition Program. Susan?
At the last council meeting, this was on the agenda, and the assignment was for people to think of candidates who we might nominate for a Spirit of America Award.
Little Paula Key. Oh, Susan aside.
I'm the last one to the picnic here.
You making a motion to that?
Well, let me, I always recuse myself of anything concerning, but she was very concerned about the letter in the enterprise, that with the accident, she was the only one. There are many other volunteers, particularly the other four that got awards here that night. So, maybe we should, I don't think she, I don't think she wants to be singled out again in lieu of them not being equally singled out. So, and I seldom speak for my wife. I'm going, I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do it again. So, I appreciate what you said. I'm sure she will too, but I think she'd rather have it spread out.
You can still nominate her.
I have an idea.
Yeah.
Nobody else does.
I love it.
We have somebody who's currently working, being paid part-time, but working a lot more. It was devoted more than 40 years to this community and its children and its recreational opportunities, and I think Tim Emery would be a really good candidate for Spirit of America.
Yeah, I'll take that as one of the motions.
I'll second.
I'll triple it.
Okay.
Okay. We all set then?
Very good. Yeah, you should.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. All right, now we're going to get on to agenda items, finally. First one be, whoop.
Do we have a D?
I don't have a D.
I have a D.
Am I missing one?
I don't mind.
I don't have a D.
Bid results.
Does anybody have a D?
There is a D, yeah.
I have it.
It's bid results. Sewer water line installation heritage park. We had one bidder. Is everyone sitting down?
Oh, no.
The bid to install 1,000 feet of water and sewer lines was $146,000, with us providing all of the materials.
Could we put it back up for bid?
Yeah, well, I almost said that $146,000 are put for installation only, because we have all of the pipe, all of the gravel, all of the, everything else.
Could we, again, have the town crew do it, but have a, no, I'm just, I'm just making a suggestion here. Have the town crew do it with a certified inspector?
It's not the inspection, that's the problem. I've inspected. You have Dave Mishu who would be doing the water lines. That's not the inspection problem. You have, I think you have three choices. A, award the contract, find the money. B, have me do it, and then increase the possibility that you won't have a grounds cutting crew, because I only have six bodies and four of them, or two of them are dedicated to the grounds. So, that takes the rest of my crew, and we will probably not get it done. I also need to rent some more equipment. Or not do the project at all and wait for a future date to bid it out.
You always smile.
We've talked about the grounds, the grounds cutting crew. We're talking about cemeteries.
Road sides, cemeteries.
Cemeteries, road sides. We got one, again, one bid, well in excess, $36,000, well in excess of what had been budgeted for last year for that activity. And last year, the town crew did it because they were between projects.
What's the timeframe to install it? If the town, if you had your entire crew?
The same amount. We'd be doing it in less than 45 days.
Okay, because, you know, mowing, the mowing and stuff kind of slows down in September and October. That gives you October and November to install.
Right, but the, you would have to delay it to the end of the season if you're going to try to avoid having grass growing, yes.
But does it make sense to go to that one bidder and use the town crew for, and have the bidder for the lawn maybe negotiate something different or go back?
I don't know. Is it a local contractor?
Sergeant was the one bidder.
Well, grounds was Gray's.
The mower.
Grounds was Gray's.
Yeah, I'm talking about the one bidder for.
It was sergeant.
Sewer water, sergeant. Huh.
We had, we had four people come to the pre-bid. We had three, they sent electronic plans to three, and we had one submit a bid.
Now, we had $200,000.
Original dollars you have through buying the material, et cetera, et cetera, renting the excavator to dig out the sub base, et cetera. You probably have about $70,000 left.
So, again, just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, my question is, is related to the mowing bidding. Does it make more sense to spend a little more money mowing and have the crew do this
What's 45 days worth for the town crew, I guess?
We could certainly approach the one bidder and see if there's something that could be done to bring down that, but certainly $36,000 is not sustainable for a season for the limited amount of mowing, especially as we move further ahead.
I got one more. If, with the economic development, is there something that's planning on going in there? Like, could it wait another year? Is this, is this pipe something that has to be completed here?
This was, this Phase Two project was advocated by your previous economic development director. So, I cannot tell you what he was aiming for or.
There are eight lots that are opened up by this. I don't know if we have any current.
Ready to fill them?
Market, not at this time. But we also only have one or two left.
I believe one.
One left in the existing park, so that if there was interest, it's not possible to meet that if this project isn't done.
Do you want to wait 45 days?
Is there a possibility of basically just shutting it down, and then as somebody wants to go in there, we do, you know, 200 feet or 400 feet over it?
Mobilization is the killer. Mobilization, because you have to lay the entire line or else you're going to have issues with it. So, either you do or not do it. The road base, a lot of that work is already done. That's been done, what hasn't been done is the installation.
I'd make a motion if I can.
Going back to the $70,000 you said.
You had advocated, allocated about 200,000, or at least 200,000 out of your TIF dollars for the project.
Yeah, but what I, what I didn't capture, maybe I didn't hear, but the $70,000 that's left, have you already purchased water lines and hydrants and the material?
You have on hand 100% of all the material, all of the material for the project. That includes the gravel, items such as crushed stone, sand, using the pipe. Every last piece of iron pipe is here, every manhole, everything is here.
Everything, it's ready, okay. That's what I'm hoping on. It seems a shame to put it off.
Yeah.
Get it done, then we're ready for people that want to come into the, you know, that may be available.
Is the excavator on site?
The excavator is sitting on site in that we held it until a resolution of the bid. That costs you $6,000 a month for rental.
You've been renting, I think, you're sitting there?
You've had it sitting there for a week and a half when I stopped work.
Now, is the road ready to put pavement on it?
The road is ready for the utilities to be put in.
Okay. Then you still have to go back over.
Right. I would be doing that work. The only thing we ask this contractor to do is put in the utilities.
I guess the next question is, do you think you can complete it for $70,000?
You're only talking about the rental of the equipment, and my personnel wages are already covered by your salaries. So, you're, we'd be charging off fuel, incidentally, but even that, you know, it's hidden in your annual cost.
Here's what I'm going with the $70,000, $70,000 that are left. You're talking about wages and fuel.
Well, you're not talking about wages. We don't deduct wages from that $70,000.
Okay, $70,000. And we need 36 to do grass cutting, mowing, while you and your people and fuel and stuff. So, the point is, do we take the 36 out of the 70 and get the job done?
Remember, you will need to rent and maybe pay for a blasting contractor, because I have, there is ledge in sight, and we exposed it when we came across and dug down to the base.
Okay, but it's six grand a week.
$6,000 for the, a month.
A month.
A month for the excavator.
Yeah, that's a lot of months.
We're not at 36,000 anymore, because we're already a month into mowing, so if we.
With the 70 left over, they could do it, we could negotiate with the grass guy.
That's what I'm saying. Use the 70 to complete the job and take the mowing and move along with Dwayne's guys. It seems we'll be on the edge, but I think we may actually come out ahead.
Now, with the sergeant, are they the only ones that could do it this year? Are there other contractors?
We have no explanation for why the one local and the two out of town, of them, only one person gave a bid. There was no explanation for why no one else bid. We also don't have their schedule. They said the RFP required that once they have the work and they're starting the work, they have 45 days to finish it. Doesn't say when they would get it started.
The goal of that was to make it more flexible for people, but what it tells me is that people aren't that hungry for work.
Yeah, more than likely, they probably wouldn't be starting until end of summer because they're already scheduled out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion?
Time was when, a few years ago, when if you put out a contract, you had bidders coming at your eyebrows and the prices were extremely competitive, but the construction.
Now, do you guys have to be certified or I have to take nothing? Nope, ready to go? Put it in, go to that.
We're, you are installing the pipe for our use to be owned by the town, owned by Bucksport Water, and Bucksport Water will be there during the entire construction of the water line. You will have to, they will, the lines will have to be certified. I've inspected sewer lines in the past for the town. Dave Mishu will be the one who agrees to the testing of the water lines.
And you'll hook that, the sewer lines will be hooked up to the sewer system professionally afterward, if they have to have somebody.
That's separate. Once you sell a property, then you're, you have to meet Mr. Hammond and with Mr. Mishu.
So, you like the idea of you guys doing it?
It's a size of project we've never done as a department. I have individuals in my department who have done this work as employees for other Scale-wise, it's just larger than anything we've. Scale-wise, it's just larger than anything we've ever done. We've never done a water line, so why, that's why Bucksport Water will be with us the whole time.
If you feel confident, I think that's.
The issue was that, time-wise and personnel.
I think what I'd like to do, again, just a suggestion, is to allow the town manager to look into alternative options for us. Talk to the mowing outfit, you know, and maybe come back with a recommendation at the next council meeting. That still gives us July, August, and September to move forward, as opposed to us trying to make a decision tonight without getting more info or more options, so to speak. I kind of get the feeling everybody's saying we need to get it done because.
Well, with the material on site, I'd rather not see it disappear or rot away.
Well, I'll inform you, the material is sitting at my garage. It's not at the job site. Everything is stored at the garage. We've got it in last fall before construction.
I don't like renting a six thousand dollar machine and it sit there.
Yeah. Well, yeah, could you get started right away on digging, starting to dig trenches? And gives us a couple of.
I can, I can start digging. The issue comes down.
You don't need the whole crew to dig your trenches.
Yeah, I need, because I start backfilling as soon as it comes in.
You know, it seems like I could find someone, high school kid. Now, when they go out to the cemetery, they could take, you could find another person to go with them. But they take my truck and give them just a push mower.
Well, they have the vehicles already. There's not, it's not a question of the vehicles. The vehicles are the same ones we shared last year. The problem is, we have never been able to find an individual or individuals willing to come in part-time.
Well, if I can find a, an adult high school kid, which I'm sure.
If bodies can be found.
How old do they have to be to run lawn mowers?
Or even, you know, a college kid, you know, in between. I mean, you have to be at least sixteen or eighteen.
Eighteen.
How does, boy, I think Rick has, has younger than eighteen.
Doing mowing, weed whacking?
I thought, I thought weed whacking. They had high school kids last year. I like the proposal that you mentioned, you know.
Let me, let me check into, I'll talk to Tim about.
Now, to go along with Tim's option, is there an option to look for a secondary mowing company if that one's not either booked up?
What we're looking for right now is some other mowing option than public works. That may include, Gray's, that may include another person if they can find somebody who's.
No, we don't have to come back and have another vote on this, so you've got the authority to go ahead and make, we say we want, right, make it work. That way, if we get things done tomorrow, then we're not, right, okay.
So I agree not to go with the one bid that we had.
Yeah, we're not going.
Now, do we have to have a motion on this? Is that a?
No.
Okay. Get it done, right? All right. Let's go into agenda items finally. Item A, approved resolve R. two thousand sixteen dash seventy to approve general fund budget for two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen in the amount of five million, one hundred and sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars. How would the council like to proceed?
Most approve.
Is this where we, we talk about the?
Community.
I have a motion around that. The community aid thing.
Yep, yep.
Should I just go ahead and make that note?
Yep.
So my motion would be to approve the budget with the changes.
Yes.
That would fund sixteen thousand, an increase, now a total, let me get this right. Give Bucksport Healthy Communities the seven thousand two hundred increase only, only.
And to bring the other ones back too.
So the, it would stay at sixteen thousand seven fifty, or it increased sixteen thousand seven fifty from the two thousand fifteen and sixteen budget. If I've added right. I just added the seventy-two hundred to the two thousand fifteen, sixteen budget.
So it's to reduce community and social agencies from seventy-nine, eight seventy-seven to take away the nine eighty-one, the forty-nine, twenty-four, and the four thousand eighty. Are those the three that we're talking about?
In other words, somebody mentioned not doing anything and my proposal is just to do the seventy-two hundred.
Seventy-four, I think it is.
It says seventy-two. It says seventy-two.
They, so.
Yeah, okay.
So we're going to leave, actually going to fund Bucksport Bay at fifteen thousand as requested. You're going to not fund main family planning, not fund AMAS, and return lifelight to its two hundred and fifty dollar appropriation. And the only other one was eastern agency, area agency on aging, which was fifteen hundred to two thousand. Are we going to leave that intact or also take that back to last year's?
My proposal was to leave everything else as last year and just give the only increase.
Now, would this Bucksport Healthy Communities Correlation, now that was supposed to be self-sufficient at some point? Is that the, is that the intent, do you know, or?
Yes.
Because we had it at one time, it was, that Bucksport kind of had that and then we gave it to somewhere.
I think that's still the intent.
The intent, okay, perfect. If that is still the intent, I.
The idea is sort of, okay, bridge to a point.
So the amended resolve would be to adopt the general fund budget in the amount of five million, one hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars.
So moved.
If I just took the seventeen like that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the amended budget.
Yes.
Of five million, one hundred and fifty-one thousand.
Four hundred and forty-four dollars.
No sense?
I'm not touching that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? Further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item B, to approve resolve R. two thousand sixteen dash seventy-one to approve the sewer budget for two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen in the amount of eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand and six, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars. How would the council like to proceed?
Most approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the sewer budget for two thousand sixteen, seventeen. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item C, to approve resolve R. two thousand sixteen dash seventy-two to approve the Marina budget for two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen in the amount of eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars. How would the council like to proceed?
Most approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item D, to approve resolve R. two thousand sixteen dash seventy-three to approve the capital improvement budget for two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen in the amount of four hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred dollars. How would the council like to proceed?
Most approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council?
I have a question. Is the sum correct? Is it four sixty or three sixty?
Four sixty.
Okay.
Part of it's taxation, part of it is general fund surplus.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Anything further from the, you had somebody over here with a question? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item E, to approve resolve R. two thousand sixteen dash seventy-four to set sewer users rate for the period of July first, two thousand sixteen through June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. Susan, do you have anything on this?
Yes, the sewer rates are supposed to be set at the same rate as for fifteen, sixteen, at nine twenty-nine per one hundred cubic feet. Some of the language in here is not. Yeah, this, the public hearing on this rate was held last year and you're sustaining the same rate if you did it.
Second, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolve, setting the sewer rates based on same numbers as last year. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item F, to approve resolve R. two thousand sixteen dash seventy-five to set the date when taxes are due and payable.
The tax due dates for, well, actually, taxes are due as of July one. That's when your, the bills go out. The interest dates is your next, the date when interest starts is your next resolve. So the July one is your due date.
Okay, how would the council like to proceed?
Most approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolve, setting a date for taxes due and payable. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Motion passes. Item G, to approve resolve R. two thousand sixteen dash seventy-six to set interest rates to be paid for taxes unpaid.
I've left, you currently have four percent, seven percent is allowable. I've left that interest rate at four percent, not increasing it to the state allowed seven percent with interest on the first half of taxes to begin September one and on the second half on April one. So they, the due date prior to interest starting will be August thirty-first for the first half and March for.
March thirty-first for the second half.
For the second half.
How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolve as stated. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Okay, item ten. Resignations, appointments, assignments, and elections. We got an election Tuesday, don't we?
Well, I think we tabled H.
Oh, I don't have an H.
Well, H is relates, H and D relate to the Heritage Park sewer line installation. We're not doing anything with either one of those.
Okay. Approve quick claim deeds and discharges. Crystal Colson and Margaret Hagerty, map twenty-one, lot one.
We received a municipal quick claim request from a law firm that indicated that in order to resolve title issues, that there were a number of liens that were recorded that didn't appear to have been discharged under quick claim. This, this document does that.
These are old liens?
These are old.
How would the council like to proceed? Approve the quick.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the quick claim deed. Anything from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes.
Okay, I'm going to pass it around. You can just sign and.
Item twelve, managers' report. Department head reports.
You have the department head reports in your pocket and I only had a couple of things that I wanted to share in terms of. Wednesdays on Main starts next Wednesday. The first event is Broadtown Mountain Puppeteers at the Alamo Theater. We look forward to an amazing and fun summer, but on, for Wednesdays on Main, but I want to remind everyone that Thursdays through Tuesdays in the town of Bucksport are just as good. And the businesses and the activities that are going on are worthy of participation and notice and we have a lot going on. So enjoy our two short summer season here. As noted, the good news on the real estate market, Kathy Kugan provided to our, our economic and community development director that fifty property sales have happened since January of two thousand fifteen in the RSU twenty-five school district, many of which are in the town of Bucksport. And she also reported that her company has been receiving numerous inquiries from other real estate agencies outside this community looking for local properties for their clients. This is good news. People are interested in coming here. The Yellow Schoolhouse, the cells on the old Yellow Schoolhouse will need replacement as part of the project that the council approved. They were not included in the original bid, but need to be done to preserve the integrity of the building. In addition, it was discovered in moving the outhouse that there was no pit under the outhouse. So we have to have a legal one installed in order for that to function properly and handle the gray water from the line that the kitchen sink had that also had no appropriate outlet. 'Tis the season. And this is just a reminder to residents that the discharge of consumer fireworks or any other fireworks in the town of Bucksport is prohibited, except for as part of town celebration. I'll be posting a notice of that in the enterprise, only because we don't want the police department to have to do a lot of enforcement with this. And finally, we'll be advertising for seasonal Marina manager to come on board this year to work with Bill Chandler, who plans on retiring from the position in seventeen, eighteen fiscal year. And earlier we did recognitions. I mentioned two other in addition to proprietor Paramedic Davlek, who had done great things here.
Question? Would put the thing about 'tis the season in the enterprise, could we also indicate in there that, you know, the fine is minimum fifty dollars to a maximum of five hundred plus court costs? So maybe some folks will take it a little more serious this year.
I will put that in the.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir.
Regarding the Wednesdays on Main, last year I went just to be supportive, to see this puppeteer presentation. And I'm telling you, maybe it's the kid in me, but it's pretty entertaining and the theater was full. So I encourage you to come out on June fifteenth and it would be nice to see counselors and town employees supporting the Wednesdays on Main and the other summer projects that we have on the waterfront and on Main Street.
Is the Guns and Hoes is doing their thing on Wednesdays, Tim?
Didn't last year.
Will be a couple of the, a couple of the.
Okay, we're going to go on to item thirteen. Set public hearings or hold public hearings and approval of any licenses or permits. We did that.
Yeah, we did that.
Okay, the first one being miscellaneous license for Bucksport Bay Area Chamber of Commerce for the Pixie Hollow Hoopla. Can you explain that?
It's new this year. It's on July seventeenth. And over at the fort, they have the pilots every year, so they're working within, with the players and the pilots are kind of together. And it's going to be held at the town dock in the gazebo. She did tell me that they have the Challenger that's coming here from, from the angle at the.
The Challenger sign?
Yeah.
That's above the air ground base.
She said there's going to be like five different organizations coming down.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the miscellaneous license for the Bucksport Bay Area Chamber of Commerce for the Pixie Hollow Hoopla. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Okay, first Victorious licenses, first one being Andrew Lacker doing business as book stacks. How would the council like to proceed?
Most approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Victorious license for Andy Lacker doing business as book stacks. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Second one is Jin Min Chin doing business as Ming's Garden. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Victorious license. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Next one is Jennifer Johnson doing business as Pebblestone Farm. How would the council like to proceed? Kathy, can you give us?
That is the ones like we proved last time. They have the farmers' market, but also like the Christmas season time, they're in the stores.
Yeah, move approved.
Second.
Second.
We have motion and a second to approve the Victura's license for Jennifer Johnson, Pebblestone Farms. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Last one is, is John Russell III doing business as Subway Sandwiches and Salads. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the license for John Russell doing business as Subway Sandwiches. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. I think that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, we don't have any public hearings to set or permits. We are all set with licenses and permits. Item 14, discussion items not on the agenda for council or public. Any discussion items from the public?
My name is Chris Johnson. I'm here to announce, tonight to announce that on June 20th at 6:00 PM at the Erie Center in North Bucksport, a group called Friends of Silver Lake will be, have an exploratory meeting to discuss what that, what, if there's any interest in trying to identify some of the issues that might be surrounding Silver Lake. I will also tell you that Rick Knowlton from Main Water has been invited. He has informed me that either he and/or Dave will be here for that meeting. I've contacted AIM and talked with Jeff McGlynn. He nor Ms. Bailey will be able to make that meeting. So I just wanted to announce, Councilman Stewart had, had requested that we follow up on some of these things and ask where.
When and where is that again, Chris?
That'll be at the Erie Center in North Bucksport at 6:00 PM on June 20th. Thank you.
The water level's high.
Thank you.
Anything, any other discussion items from the public? Discussion items from the coun, oh, yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to let you know that we flew in the winning pitcher of the Bucksport game today, Jay Garvin, who's his father's son. And they won the game today and they play tomorrow, right? Is that? Holton?
No, no, Saturday.
Saturday? Will they play Holton?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that a home game here, right?
Uh, no way.
Oh, yes, okay.
You need a sports agent for your future.
Any discussion items from the council? No? Okay, we'll go to item 15. Upcoming public hearing designated topics for committee assignments and scheduling of committee meetings. We got a request from the Finance Committee to discuss 36 Elm Street request to purchase part of a lot. Who's, who's the, who's the chairman?
Pete. When is he, when is he back?
July.
July 6th. July 6th. Is this something that needs to be done immediately, or?
This is the, the property that's adjacent to the fire station and that part of the lot they want to buy, oh, the fire station, public safety building, excuse me, sorry. I will get stopped on the way home, sure as the devil. Public safety building. It's part of that lot that they're looking to access a small parcel of. I, I don't know, they, I have been contacted a couple of times, but I don't know that it's.
Are they the young couple that came in here looking for the easement or whatever?
Well, they, the young couple that had the garage that was over the line on the land that we originally did, yes. It is. But July 6th is less than a month. I mean, we could certainly schedule it for the, prior to the first council meeting in July for a finance committee meeting.
That'd be fine.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll get it beyond the baseball season.
Six, that would be six, probably six o'clock the night of the first council meeting in July.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, item 16. Anybody interested in adjournment?
Motion.
Second.
We have motion and a second for adjournment. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes.